Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 7th. Tonight, we have a Planning, Zoning, Commission Public Hearing and General Meeting. It is about 7:00 o'clock. We are here in Town Hall in Room 206. And we have a very important agenda today, but we also have a Yankee game that starts at 8:08. So if you guys are Yankee fans, let me get that. You got that, Mazlin? Okay. The first thing I would like to do is I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move 5 Herman Avenue and 3 Herman Avenue for the first couple of items of business. Can someone make that motion? Jamie makes the motion. Can I get a second? Jamie makes a second all in favor. Okay. Bob, you can turn off your computer and sit down. The first item on the agenda is going to be landfilling and grading application number 594, also known as PL-25-121 Herman Avenue LLC, 5 Herman Avenue. Propose to construct a new single family dwelling on a now vacant lot, construction of a new driveway and a patio area, and perform related site to own activities, including the regrading of the property to accommodate the improvements and installation of stormwater management. The 0.207 plus minus acre subject property is located on the north side of West Avenue, approximately 85 feet west of its intersection with Herman Avenue, and is shown on assessment map number 20 as Lot 6A in the R1/5th and R1/3rd zones. Fred, what do you got?
This application was submitted in conformance with Section 850 of the zoning regulations under our landfilling and regrading regulations. The application is being seen by the commission tonight because of the regrading that would be occurring on the property as a result of the development of 5 and 3 Herman Avenue. The commission is going to look at these applications separately. Roughly 100 cubic yards of fill will be required on the combined properties. The property line, I'm sorry, the property slope from elevation 104 on the western property line to elevation 90 on the eastern property line with a slope of roughly 8 to 15%. No soil will need to be removed from the site as the excavation of the proposed foundations will be used to fill the property. The application was referred out to Joe Canis of Ty &amp; Bond. He submitted comments for the record dated September 12th, with final comments being issued by Mr. Canis on October 6th, noting all of his outstanding comments had been addressed. He actually did recommend one potential condition of approval, and that is related to comment number 10 of his memo, which speaks to contours around the curbing of the driveway. The application was also referred out to the Building Department. Building official Mike Viti issued an email dated August 26th noting no issue with the application. A free cut was issued in May for the division of this property. And we note that an easement from 3 Herman Avenue would be granted to 5 Herman Avenue for access to the site from Herman Avenue. Tonight, we have Bob Mazlin here and Brian Muller of Muller Engineering to present the details of the application and answer any questions you have.
Fantastic. Welcome, Counselor Mazlin.
Robert Mazlin representing the applicant. It's going to be a long night, but I'll try to make it short. I think Fred covered just about everything, and I have the most, the more relevant stuff in the PowerPoint. But it's a little less, it's probably less than 100 cubic yards of fill to bring onto the site. The foundation material will be kept on site a couple of years for use as part of the regrading. This site has never been developed, so we've never had a drainage system on it. Now, the engineers have designed a stormwater management system on number 5. We're doing 5 first. Everything is going to be redundant when I do the other one. But the 1, 2, 5, 10, 25, and 50-year storms. Fred was reading from this letter from the engineer regarding the grading, so we covered that. I have a zoning location survey up showing generally the location of the house, conceptual house. There's frontage directly on 2 West Avenue, but the access is going to be along the driveway easement along the northern portion of number 3 Herman. 3 Herman will also access directly onto Herman, so there'll be no new curb cuts on West Avenue. The house is entirely within the R1/5th zone portion of the property, R1/3rd up to the north, and that's just basically driveway. The, we'll get to the stormwater management in a second. Here's the site plan. Try to keep it short if you want to hear from the engineers here, but basically, we have cultex up here.
Yeah, we'd rather hear from the engineer than you explain the engineer.
Pardon?
I'd rather hear from the engineer than you.
I can do it.
Why don't we do that?
I'm John Guihiem. I work for Muller Engineering.
What's your name again?
Sean Guihien, G-U-I-H-E-E-N.
Can you hear him?
Yes.
I mean, channel 79.
Yes, no, you slow.
We're good?
Okay. So drainage plan is cultex system catching the driveway in the north part of the lot. The outstanding comment is regarding curbing along here, which we can add in better language to show that this curbing will direct water to that cultex. There's another cultex catching the house in the south of the lot and a porous paver patio. And that's all the drainage on this lot.
And which way is this slope? Left to right or right to left?
The high point of the lots are here in this top corner, and it slopes to the, pretty much the corner of West and Herman with a low area. Can you sort of the next slide to show the whole plan? So the low area is here.
To have cultex there, too.
Yeah, we can talk about that more with 3 Herman. But for our proposed grading, this drains kind of this way, and this then drains that way. And in between the two walls, it's relatively flat, but sloping front of the house, like front to back.
Be back to front.
Front door, back door, front to back.
The front door is in the back of the house?
Yeah, because your frontage, it'll.
They did that down the block in another house.
Yeah.
Yeah, they popped it out.
They flipped to the other side, and their neighbors on the other side were buried.
So that's roughly the drainage for this. If there's any questions, I can answer those.
Okay, and so the water is, and just explain that wall to me that except, that separates the two.
So we have a wall along the outside of the property. That's a cut wall, high side being over here, low side being here.
And how tall is that?
At its highest, it's a five-foot cut wall.
Okay, so top of the wall is it?
103 in the top, northwest.
Northwest. Right, but that's a grade.
Yeah, it'll match existing grade at 103.
So it's less than four feet because the top of the wall is 100, bottom of the wall is 97.5, right?
If you go to the north, the northmost corner, the northeast corner, northwest corner.
103 to 98, that one?
Yeah, so that would be five foot at max.
Now, that's got to be an engineered wall, right? Because it's more than five feet.
Uh, yes.
More than four feet, right? That's the rule?
Yes.
So the whole wall is going to be engineered from the whole length of the property?
It's only five foot for a small portion.
Right, that's my question.
Yeah, we could, it is possible to lower that to be a four-foot wall. It would need to be changed slightly, but it is possible.
Because, I mean, that's Building Department. You're not going to get a permit if you're putting in a five-foot wall on site engineered.
Okay.
Right? You know that.
I didn't hear what you said.
If you're not going to get a building permit if you're doing a five-foot wall, something more than four feet.
Without meeting the specs, correct.
Right. Then the other thing is, what's the regulation, Jeremy, on how high the wall has to be before you have to put a fence on top of it? So little kids don't fall off the wall.
Yeah, I don't know. In this case.
That's building code.
It's a couple of feet off the wall, it's a couple of feet off the propping line. So whether they would have to put a fence up there or not, I'd have to lead that to the Building Department.
Okay, that's Building Department checks in. Because we don't get into the architectural of, you know, walls and whatnot.
Is there a wall separating the two properties?
There's a wall separating these two. There's only four and a half.
So you talked about the one that borders on the west side. Now then, talk about the one in the center, please.
Yeah, in between the two houses is a four and a half foot at max wall, I believe.
It's flush at the bottom, and it's 96 versus 92 at the top, right?
I believe that the highest spot would be kind of in the corner of the property line. There's a 97 and a 92.5.
Right, so that's your four feet, so you're legit there. The next one, the next spot elevation is also 96, 92. In the middle, you're 97 and a half and 92. That gets bigger then, that's four and a half feet, isn't it? Is that my math?
Yeah.
So that's got to be engineered, too, because of the piece in the middle. Okay, are you prepared for that? Makes it expensive.
Yeah, I mean, I think as John said.
If you're going to respond.
I'm sorry about that.
And if you're allowed to talk, just say what your name is.
Yeah, Joseph Bavona. I'm the developer on this.
Sorry, last name again?
Bavona.
Can you spell it for me, please?
Yeah, B as in boy, I-V-O-N-A. I just wanted to say, I'm confident that John and Brian will be able to either address it to where we're under four feet, we've dealt with this many times, or, you know, we have to do what we have to do, whatever the Building Department requires. I'll engineer it if we need to.
How do you want to hear that, handle that, a potential resolution? You want to say it's four feet? You want to say it's over four feet? You want to say it's under four feet?
I guess.
Condition of approval.
Yes, certainly.
I want to leave it here and open for a foot.
Right, it would be, if they want to fine tune it a little, I don't think it changes the amount of grading on the property to an extent, because it's a cut into the slope. So it's not like they're bringing everything up. Compared to that western property line, they are actually, which is at elevation 105, the driveway is at 97. So when you pull into the driveway at elevation 97, you're going to be looking at a five-foot wall in front of you, and beyond that, three feet beyond that, is the property, which is even two feet above that. So every day, you're going to drive into the driveway, looking at the wall, looking up at the property next to you.
So you're talking about the driveway off of West Avenue, because their driveway's in the back.
No driveway on Herman.
No driveway on West Avenue.
Oh, I'm sorry, the driveway on Herman that goes up to get the house.
So you're going to start on Herman at elevation, what, 89? Drive gently up the driveway to 97, 97 and a half. Make a left turn into the garage, but when you look up, you'll be looking up at, you'll be looking at the wall, five feet, and then three feet above, three, four, five, actually the top of the wall, 103, two feet above that would be the property with the West Avenue address.
Okay. Okay, so now the cultex you split, I like when you split systems.
Just to back up one second. The language you usually use is something like this, this approval doesn't relieve the applicant's obligation to obtain other necessary permits. And you can always say, including, without limitation, building and whatever else.
It's a great idea. That's what you're freaking for. That's what you're here for.
Thought I'd add something to that.
Thank you, sir.
You didn't want to hear me talk about cultex.
No, I don't want to hear you talk about cultex. Okay, so the cultex and that one split, the walls we talked about, the grading we talked about.
And you're, I'm sorry I interrupted you, but you were going to move on to another topic.
That's fine. And most of the fill is on this property, or is it split between the two?
Uh, most of the fill, it's split between the two. I would say most of the fill is on the lower property because that's where the low area is.
Okay. This thing's already clear cut, right? We clear cut it a couple of seconds. Question, Jamie?
I'm coming in.
George?
Just looking, oh, I'm on the wrong block. Never mind, I'll ask later.
Yeah, we're focused, we're still focused on 5, right? We're doing 5 before 3. Jamie?
I'm good.
Okay. Can we hear from Joe Canis? There he is. I didn't see, I didn't see a response that are dated yesterday, but I'm sure it's.
For the record, Joe Canis, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, principal engineer at Ty &amp; Bond, requesting permission to review the application. And yeah, I did shoot two letters. The first dated September 10th, and the most recent one dated yesterday, October 6th. And on this particular application, you know, all my comments have been addressed except for one minor comment with just a clarification about the extent of curbing, which the applicant's engineer already discussed.
Can you just point that out, Joe?
Sure. It's, I mean, not standing in the way here, but it's up and through this area here.
Dead square and away.
Yep.
Dead square and away.
Go on this side, go on this side.
God, you have a great.
All right, so coming down the driveway here, you can see the contours pass through the driveway, right? If it was curved, these, the contours would be offset, right? Yeah. So it's a minor comment, and it won't really impact anything.
So he's going to do it the way you want him to do it?
What's that?
He's going to do it the way you want him to do it?
Yeah, yeah, there's really only one way to do it, based on the grading, so I'm sure that they're, yeah. Yeah, and there's a clarification about the wall height. The building code requires anything over three feet. That's what it would be.
Is it three feet? I thought it was four feet.
Right, and it's a common thing, you know, we see it on a lot of applications, and we've done it on applications also, where, you know, particularly if the wall is like a proprietary product, like, you know, those Versalock, right? The manufacturer themselves will actually design the wall for you, you know, for using their product. And they'll come, develop all the computations, so that's a common practice.
Versus the poured-in-place with the steel rebar and whatever.
Right, exactly, which gets very expensive, yeah.
Which ones were expensive? The inner lock or the other one?
Oh, the poured-in-place, yeah, by far, yeah.
Okay, all right, cool. Everybody good with Joe? All right, what else you got, Bob?
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. As far as site plan, I have a conceptual landscape plan. This is pretty much it. I don't have Kate Rockmorton put this together from Matt's office, so I'm not going to try to put Matt on the spot.
Well, it's fine. It's very helpful, but it's not required.
Pardon?
It's very helpful, but it's not required for us.
Yeah. So we, the applicants have given landscaping consideration here. Something else worth mentioning, perhaps the engineer can talk about this, but this plan leaves open, and this extends a little bit onto number 5, the site distance isn't, is basically improved, and I forgot which plan it, probably on the next.
The sight lines for traffic?
This area here, maybe he can talk about.
I can explain. So it provides, if you're stopped at this stop line, you have clear line of sight to the traffic coming down West Avenue for 500 feet plus, which is much better than existing. Existing, there's lots of trees in the way. So the landscape plan keeps that area clear, providing clear sight lines all the way down the West Ave.
And you have no curb cut on Rings, on West Avenue, because the dudes that can fly in out of Rings End, which is.
Yeah, no curbs on West Ave.
They don't look at anybody, they just hit the gun. You don't want them getting clipped. Okay, that's great. What else?
The only other thing I have is conceptual house, which, you know, modest house, goes into the footprint in the site plan and complies with zoning, complies with the height. But one of the usual conditions on these is that the zoning has to be in complete compliance when they get their permits for the house.
So what's the height of the house on that thing?
How high is it?
Yeah, if you look at the one.
This one, I forgot which one this one was.
Because I'm looking at this.
29, 4 and 1/2.
What, where, right?
It says 30.0 on the one we have.
That might be an older version. This one, that's number 5.
This is August 24th. That one is, would be more current.
30.0.
September 24th?
Thirty, yeah, 30, 29, 4 and 1/2 is what I got.
Oh, you know what I think he did was the zoning table is on the site plan, but the architectural, we went back and forth probably a good three times to make sure the height was going to come out correct.
This is, this is dated June 26, 2025. I'm looking at A.01.
Right, but this plan.
That was when it was issued, the revised, the revision date on this one is 8/28.
8/28 is the revision date on this one.
Okay.
But the architects, and also, I don't have a slide of it, but there's a detailed calculation of the grade planes before and proposed, so that we have a good base to work with. One of the lots is limited by the one-foot rule, the other one actually comes in under a foot, increase in elevation, so we're, it's easily doable and.
Okay, so you guys have the updated, because I'm looking at the zoning, the zoning, zoning black on this one.
It may need to be revised, but we'll double check that.
Okay. You good? You want to open up to the public?
Okay.
Anybody in the public like to speak to this application? Oh, got it. Anybody else? We're good? You want to close this one right now, or you want to keep it open for a second, then open up there when we close it again?
Yeah, you can close it.
And close it? Okay. And Tim, motion to close? I think George got the motion, I think Jamie got the second. Okay, great, thank you. Okay. That's that one. Go ahead. Bob, you're doing good.
And then the other one is right here. Do you want to just kind of incorporate the initial reading into, well, there's a different part.
Yeah, I just remind, Jesus. So, next item on the agenda is landfilling and regrading application number 595, also known as PL-25-122 Herman Avenue C, address is 3 Herman Avenue. Propose to construct a new single family dwelling on a now vacant lot, construction of a new driveway, retaining walls and a patio area, perform related site to old activities, including the regrading of the property to accommodate the improvements and the installation of stormwater management. The 2.3, the 0.233 plus minus acre Shelby property is located on the northwest corner formed by the intersection of Herman Avenue and West Avenue, is shown on assessment map number 20 as Lot 6 in the R5th and the R1/3 residential zones.
Are you going to go again? Sure, this application was submitted in conformance with Section 850 of the zoning regulations and the landfilling and regrading regulations. The application was referred out to Joe Canis of Ty &amp; Bond. Mr. Canis submitted comments for the record dated September 12th. The final comments being issued by Mr. Canis on October 6th, noting that all of his outstanding issues and comments have been addressed by the applicant. He was also referred out to the Building Department. Building official Mike Viti issued an email dated August 26th noting no issue with the Again, as I noted in previous application, a free cut was issued to divide the two lots, the 3 and 5 Herman, and 3 will be granting an easement in favor of 5 Herman for access to their lot from Herman Avenue. Again, Bob Mazlin is here to present the application and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Good Bob. Good evening again.
Go ahead, go right ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Robert Mazlin represent the applicant in this one. I have up on the screen the same engineering grading letter that was in the number 5 application. I have here the zoning location survey for the corner lot number 3. You'll see the house footprint is located within the R1/5 zone. Driveway, let's try my technological wizardry here. Right here is this driveway, goes onto West Avenue, and both of these driveways, they're almost side by side, but they're as far away from the intersection as we can get them. Next slide is the site plan.
Can you hold on one second? Where's the, where's the separation between 1/5th and 1/3rd zone?
Oh, this black broken line.
Okay.
Right here.
So would this, just thinking, would this be a candidate to move the zoning line someday?
Well, Bob and I did talk about that about six or eight months ago, and I think at this point, some of the free cuts there, but it wouldn't do anyone any harm to change it in the future.
Okay, because every once in a while, we clean them all up, and then we do it.
In a case like this, it's not going to, usually the scanner the commission uses is going to change the amount of lots or development that someone could get. In this case, it would not make a one difference because these lots are still right up against the 20% coverage as designed.
Right, they would not even build on that area, too, either.
Correct.
Maybe some point in the future, you do a map update and clean up a lot of these. But we don't need it for this, and as Jeremy mentioned, it doesn't really change anything.
Okay, cool.
Engineer?
Yep.
Do you want to state my name again?
Yep. Sure do, man. You get really good grades from the state of Connecticut.
Representing Muller Engineering. For this drainage plan, we have six systems on the lot, starting on the north. We have a four-unit cultex system that catches driveway area primarily in terms of impervious coverage, the driveway from, that goes to 5 Herman. We have another, this is a porous asphalt stone bed catching two roof leaders and the driveway again. And we have a cultex system catching the rest of the house, a porous paver patio with a stone bed. And additionally, we have two stone trenches along this, the West Ave property line and the Herman property line. The main concern, I mean, these don't really catch any impervious coverage, it's just lawn area. Due to there being a big low area on this property, under existing conditions, almost no water leaves the site, and we maintain that via having stone beds catch grass.
Because we started with a fresh metal, and you did a fresh metal.
It's a fresh metal that retains water because of the low area.
Now, the one that's going north and south, that's six cultex, right?
This is five. This one's five, this one's four.
So the four is actually on the other property?
It's technically on 3 Herman's property. It'll be in the easement area, but it catches the driveway that goes to 5.
And then the pink boxes that are in the driveway, what's that mean?
This box here is a network of porous, perforated PVC pipe that is set flat in the stone bed of the driveway to, in case the porous asphalt were to become clogged, the water would still be able to distribute throughout the stone bed.
So you're doing porous asphalt on that?
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't work, right? There's a commissioner on this commission that put it on his house, it didn't work. He pressed it over.
We've had success with houses in Greenwich, and we've done porous and other houses in there, yeah. It's not ideal, there's nowhere, there's no room to fit cultex in. That is the issue. The only way to catch this driveway, there's just not space in this tiny corner to fit a whole cultex system big enough to catch the driveway and not let any water leave the property.
Right, that's just the rule. Was there porous asphalt on the other one?
No, there's no porous asphalt on the other one.
So what do we do? How do you maintain that in the future? Because this thing trades somebody else, because this driveway stinks.
I think Mr. Muller's firm, John from Mr. Muller's firm, submitted a maintenance plan, and they'll have to maintain it going forward. He's hired the vacuum truck, yes?
Yeah.
Wow. That gets recorded on the land record, so brokers and realtors can call it. You've seen that?
No, I've not yet.
No, I've not yet had a house traded with the maintenance record coming through with the municipal search. I will soon, someday, but not yet.
Hopefully not that soon.
Well, the standard, I mean, this is filling, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, they exist, right? Craig Flaherty stopped putting, I mean, he puts in those porous pavers and they're a hell of a lot more expensive.
I guess the real question is, say, it becomes an inevitable conclusion that you have to change the surface of that driveway. Does it really change the needle on the water remediation and a Coltech system that should just plan for that potential?
That's a great reworded question.
If you needed to change the surface and you were going to make it asphalt, you could keep the stone bed to treat roof leaders that are still getting into there and they will still overflow via the catch basin. You could do something similar, we have on this driveway with a trench drain that would go into the catch basin and then distribute it through the stone bed. The porous paver, the porous patio, the porous asphalt drive, uh, makes it so you don't have to have a trench drain right now, but in the future you can put a trench drain in.
But you could without having to dig up the lawn and add more Coltechs, etc.
Yeah, you can maintain a stone bed there and there's ways to get the water into.
There's an engineering solution if somebody had to change that out.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The, my, I mean, I, I get it, it's supposed to work, right?
Yeah.
But if, if my fellow bought this house, he'd have his guy two years later doing that, you know, driver works and, and put that black tour on it every year. That's what he does. That's his shtick. He's probably watching on TV, sorry pops.
You mean the guys that drive around with the pickup truck and the?
They come out with the hot, and they pour it down and they, so if somebody does that, no one's going to know the wiser, but is that going to, is that going to mess up something? I mean, the developer's out, he sold the house two years ago.
It, it, it won't. It'll, the, the roof leaders will still get into the driveway and it can still overflow via the catch basin. The driveway will sheet flow into west, into, and directly into the catch basin right here in the road, so.
So we're not.
It would marginally increase, no, no. It won't cause a failure in flooding in the house and the neighbors to be drowned out.
Okay.
Right, but how far is the street drop down to West Avenue?
The contour here is ninety, in the road you got eighty-eight, nine, this catch basin is at eighty-eight, five. This is eighty-nine, five, so it puddles to here. We're at ninety-one, five, so it's not that steep. It's a three feet from here to here.
It's going to drain into that catch basin?
Yeah.
It's not going to flood down to West Avenue?
No.
Okay, that's right. That makes sense. Any questions for the engineer?
Now I know about the stone beds that I was curious about as well.
You got yours then?
I'm good.
All right. What's next, Bob? Oh, Joe Canis.
Oh yeah, I forgot.
Again, Joe Canis, licensed professional engineer with Ty &amp; Bond, retained by the commission for the review of the application. I issued two letters dated September twelfth and the most recent on October sixth. You know, initially we had about, uh, it looked like we had about twelve comments or so. Uh, the applicant has responded to all those comments, has addressed them in their entirety, so there are no recommended conditions of approval here, so we're satisfied that it conforms to the town stormwater management regulations.
And they start out with the, obviously the fresh model approach, right? Okay, cool. Thanks Joe.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
I guess that's it.
Landscaping plan, we talked about that a second ago. Just throw back props things in.
Sorry?
Just throw up the landscaping plans, same thing. And the front door of this house?
The same plan that we showed you before.
Where's the front door of this house?
West Ave.
Here?
Herman Ave.
Okay.
It, it's either here or in here.
Right where it says porch, so.
Yep, I got it.
Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, porch.
Okay.
The little recessed part.
Yep, and then the zoning box with all that, it's the number of feet and all that, good stuff. The height should be thirty feet dead on. The lot coverage is eighteen point five percent.
Uh, I think this is twenty-eight, nine, actually. This one worked out a little better than the other one.
This map is dated nine twenty-four, twenty-five. This one?
Right, but this, the architect.
Right here it says proposed thirty feet. That's wrong?
Well, that was before we went back and forth on how to calculate under the Darien regulations and this resulted in a house that was basically, the height, height was changed to comply.
Still check that a little bit, Jeremy?
Yes, we've been working closely with, um, Mr. Muller.
This is the wrong one.
Sure, and then before he gets building permit, we'll double check again, make sure that with the grading and adding the fill that residence complies with the height.
Thank you, sir.
Same condition, Steve.
Yep, got it. Okay, um, I'm going to go to the public. Would anybody in the public like to speak to this application? Say none, I think we're good. And that's just your proposed architecturals? Questions? I think we're good, right?
Yep, good.
Nothing. Can you close this one too, Fred?
Yes.
Okay. And to motion to close? Amy's in again.
Here we go.
Got a motion from Amy, thinking for a second? Okay, so Jamie's second, on the favor. Hearing's closed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Appreciate it. You too.
Want to take a break first or?
Yeah, you can, man, it's. Oh, you got to drink a half an hour before that seems, so.
Sorry it took so long.
I'm going to be most of the talking, my fault. All right, next item on the agenda is business site plan application number three one three, special permit application number three forty-four. Also known as PL twenty-five dash one twenty, Heights Corners LLC at ninety, hundred and one ten Heights Road. Propose to redevelop the property as a mixed-use residential slash commercial and perform related site development activities, including the, including the construction of parking, plaza, uh, public plaza areas, installation of landscaping, lighting, and stormwater management. The applicant proposes to construct one three-story mixed-use building with commercial space on the ground level and twenty-one and two bedroom dwelling units on the upper floors. The subject property consists of three parcels located on the north side of Heights Road to the east and west of Edgerton Street. Ninety Heights Road is shown on assessment map seventy-five at, as lot twenty-nine, which is zero point seven four plus minus acres. One hundred Heights Road is shown on assessment map number seventy-five as lot twenty-eight, and it is zero point one nine plus minus acres. One eighty-eight Heights Road is shown on assessment map number seventy-four as lot nine, and that is zero point three nine plus minus acres. The subject properties are all located within the Nuroten Heights Business Zone, the NH Zone, in total one point three three acres and will be developed as a single development site. Gentlemen, what do we got?
Uh, this application was submitted in conformance with sections one thousand and one thousand and twenty of the Darien zoning regulations under our business site plan and special permit regulations. This application was submitted in connection with COZR number three, twenty twenty-five. Proposed amendments to the zoning regulations relative to onsite plaza areas and finished floor areas um, and which will be further modified to potentially allow for office uses on first floors within the Nuroten Heights Business Zone. The commission, of course, opened that hearing last Tuesday, September thirtieth, and continued that hearing to October twenty-eighth. As the current site plan and special permit is dependent on the zoning amendments, uh, the commission cannot close the hearing until after that hearing is closed, uh, so this hearing will be continued tonight. The application before you is for a three-story mixed-use development consisting of ninety-five hundred square feet of commercial space on the ground level with a total of twenty-one and two-bedroom apartments on the upper floors, ranging in size from six hundred and three square feet to one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine square feet. They're also seeking to create amenity space in the basement level of the building and on the rooftop as well. Uh, the applicant is also proposing public plaza areas on the site as an incentive for the third story of the building per section seven forty-eight of the regulations. The applicant has shown roughly eleven thousand square feet of public plaza area. Um, however, the commission is going to need to make a determination on whether that total square footage for, uh, uh, will, will count towards the plaza area.
What did you say the number was on that?
Um, it's roughly eleven thousand square feet.
And the regs say ten thousand or five percent, whichever's greater.
Correct.
And the five percent of this lot would be how many square feet?
Five per, um. Let's have to do the calculation.
I can do it, fifty-eight thousand feet times. Fifty-eight thousand.
Yeah, what's that?
It was about twenty-six hundred square feet.
Yeah, it sounds about right.
I think it's two thousand nine hundred, yeah.
Is this what you're looking for?
Right, so what I got to be along, okay. Now, which one's one eighty-eight? That's the, that's the dude's garage? So it goes forty-eight, twenty-two, you get one eighty-eight.
Vacant parking lot.
Yeah, well, it's vacant now, it wasn't vacant two weeks ago.
It's vacant, yeah.
Welcome, sir.
If I may, just, Fred, I think you said that this, we can't close this because the zoning, this project is dependent on the zoning amendments being passed. Whose view is that? Is it this board's view? Is it the applicant's view? Who determined that?
Well, under the current proposal, the, the current proposal isn't allowed without the change in the regulation. So the regulation would need to.
Having a multi-use, um, improvement there is not yet currently allowed?
Well, from a couple of different perspectives, one from, from, from the public plaza perspective, um, needing that, that plaza space for, for the third floor of the building.
But you said it's going to eleven thousand square feet and the reg's ten, so they meet it.
Well, I think the commission's got a little closely at, does it meet not only the number in regs, but the design specifications in the regs? The regulations are pretty clear in terms of what should count and what shouldn't count.
Right.
And then the other issue, George, is the, looking at the basement and attic space. And then the issue is they want to change to allow office, potentially office use on the first floor.
Okay.
And have we gone through ARB?
And also waiting for ARB. I expect that they're going to hear the matter for a second time after meeting, I think it's just through October twenty-first, if I recall.
So would it be fair to say there's some aspects of the proposed amendment that may not be necessary while others are?
I think that depends on the applicant.
Yeah.
Right.
Right? If they rejigger it, they don't need any of the amendments.
Okay, and if we don't pass some of the amendments?
Then they have to go back to the drawing board.
Then they have to rejigger it.
Yep.
Okay, that's just, Claire, thank you.
If I could just.
Steve, I just want to clarify a few other things before, before the applicant gets started.
Sure.
It's just to note that the, the maximum density for dwelling units in the Nuroten Heights Business Zone is twelve units per acre. So the base density is sixteen point three units for the one point three acre site. Three point six additional incentive units are also being created for the total of the twenty units proposed on the site. Um, and a total of three point two deed restricted affordable units are required by our inclusionary zoning regulations. Uh, fourteen percent for the base units and then twenty-five percent for the incentive units. We also note that the applicant has also asked to pay a fee in lieu for the affordable units, but as you know, that's ultimately up to the commission as to whether you'd like the affordable units to be constructed onsite or for the fee in lieu to be paid.
They're like, given constructed offsite too.
I'll jump right to the slide that has the density and the affordable and incentive units.
Before I launch, uh, station any of the regulations.
Sorry?
Did you open, did you say about Maslin yet?
I said it too many times already. Robert Maslin representing the applicant.
But can I just go back? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just for clarity in my own little mind.
Yeah.
Uh, did you say twelve units is the base number of units permitted in, on the site?
Per acre, correct.
Twelve per acre.
Yeah.
Twelve per acre, oh, and this is how many acres?
So that would equate to sixteen point three for this parcel.
Okay, because this is a fraction of.
Right, and then when you do the incentive units, you get more, so.
That was, that was going to be my question. The incentive units are actually added to the base that is currently permitted.
Correct.
Correct.
So at the end of the day, if you take the size of the dirt and the, and the lower units, you're fourteen point three something, something.
Okay, thank you.
So you're still, yeah, you're fourteen point nine three dwellings per acre, including the incentive units.
Thanks.
And just to very quickly review the referrals that were received.
Sure.
Um, the commission hired two peer reviewers for this application. Uh, Joe Canis of Ty &amp; Bond to review the stormwater management and sediment erosion controls. Uh, and Greg Del Rio of H&amp;H to review the chart, uh, the traffic and parking aspects of the proposal. Uh, Joe submitted comments for the record dated September twenty-fifth and Greg submitted comments dated September thirtieth. Both Joe and Greg are here tonight to present their findings and their reports to the commission. The application was also referred out to the fire marshal, he submitted comments for the record dated September twenty-second. Uh, it was referred out to the local traffic authority. The LTA submitted comments for the record dated September second. Uh, we note that the applicant also went before the police commission on September eleventh and the meeting, uh, the minutes from that meeting have been uploaded to the application. Uh, the applicant also went before the ARB on September sixteenth and will be returning on October twenty-first. Uh, the applicant has not yet gone before the sewer commission, but will need to do so. Uh, the sewer commission's next meeting is November eleventh, so that's a likely date for the applicant. And only one public comment has been submitted on this application thus far.
Fred, would you mind just, um, to review what our regulations say can count as a public plaza space or part of that if it's separated into multiple parts of region?
Sure.
And before we jump into that, just as a clarification matter, when I look at the minutes for, um, the police commission hearing, it looks like they went before them, um, and it says captain will look into the matter. So I wasn't quite sure what was, what's the matter that they're going to look into. Is, I, I couldn't tell from the, definitively from these minutes.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll go back and watch them, but I couldn't tell from their minutes.
We'll see if we can get Claire.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what their synopsis was.
I, I think that.
Just, just a minute.
Hold on, you got to introduce yourself first.
And, and I think we also, we're not done yet asking for just a primer.
Yeah.
Uh, so if you could, I would also like to hear James' question answered with regards to, uh, design specs with regards to public plaza per the reg. Have a discussion about that ground us before we hear this application.
Sure. Uh, the design specs for public plazas are laid out in section seven forty-eight of the regulations. Um, and there's really a whole list of, um, design considerations relative to the design and location of plaza areas. You know, starting with total area of all onsite public plazas shall be not less than five percent of the total area of the lot being redeveloped or ten thousand square feet, which, whichever is greater, we already covered that.
Can I stop you one second? What's, what's six?
Hmm, I don't know what six...
Section six-eighty-seven of the zoning requires public plaza space part of a redevelop and its subject property.
I think that must be under the old regs. Yeah, that must be under the old regs because when we redid the regs...
And should we redo them? Yeah.
That six-eighty-seven doesn't exist anymore.
All of six went away.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay?
I'm sorry.
Would you just like me to go down each of the specific requirements for the plaza areas?
I think it would be helpful to set the primer for the conversation.
Sure. Okay. The public plaza shall be reserved from building coverage and shall be developed and maintained by the owner and open to the general public provided that the commission may approve as public plaza areas covered by an upper floor of adjacent structures or an upper floor connecting two structures or by awnings, eaves, or similar. Public plazas shall include seating and features such as a fountain, water cascade, or other water display, public art, or other comparable public amenity, which is maintained by the property owner or the representative in operating condition throughout the year except when weather conditions prohibit such operation. The area of at least one public plaza shall be at least thirty-five hundred square feet in size, which can fit a box of at least thirty-five feet by thirty-five feet in size. Public plaza features shall not be reserved for exclusive use by any occupant or tenant of the redevelopment site. The public plaza is not to be used as an expansion of the commercial uses of the site such as dining tables or outside display sales area or other activities which may hinder public access. Commonly-used areas such as sidewalks, parking areas, and the like shall not be included in the calculation of the total area of onsite public plaza features. Landscaped islands within a parking lot cannot count towards a public plaza unless they are thirty feet wide. A public plaza cannot be in a required buffer unless it provides public access into the site. For each public plaza, the commission shall find that its location, layout, dimensions, landscaping, traffic, lighting, signage, drainage, utilities, and other features shall be in harmony with the convenient, orderly, and attractive development of the zone. And that covers it.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Who wrote that?
That I'm not sure of.
We'll find out. Everybody good? Precursor questions sent?
Thank you.
Mr. Maslin, welcome, sir.
Good evening. I don't know if I did this already. Robert Maslin representing the applicant. I think the best way to start off, John, you want to...
Sure.
Kind of give, while he's, John's coming up. We did open the hearing on the public, I mean, the text amendment portion of our project here. To answer George's question before, there are three things. The one we can withdraw if it turns out we don't need is the reduction of the ten thousand square foot minimum area. I went through that whole analysis in the other hearing. The other two are more necessary. One, for the first floor, right now, office and professional and business offices are allowed upstairs, but not on the first floor. And that, so that one text amendment is to add that to the permitted uses by special permit. And I put on...
We haven't seen that yet. That's coming on the twenty-eighth.
That hasn't come out yet. That's, we have to notice that.
Yeah, that was on part of the last.
Correct. And just so you know, it's not wholesale. I did put a maximum floor area so that you wouldn't have big box stores on the first floor of these. And the other one...
Again, we have not seen any of that.
And the other is, there's basement amenity space for the residential units and a vestibule at the elevator on the roof. And under strict reading of the regulations, those two count, but there's kind of a little bit of flexibility, but not clear in the incentives under the inclusionary zoning We would ask that it be more, basically clarify that you can have limited space in the basement and on the roof without having to count them as stores and add a little bit of business, of building height for the upstairs vestibule. John?
John Caro, developer and Darien resident. Thank you for your time tonight.
Welcome, sir.
You gave us a nice slot here, so we appreciate it very much. I think, Bob, I think there's a slide right after this that shows...
The aerial?
The aerial, yeah. So this is a transit-oriented location, which under this governor has become extremely important for a lot of reasons. For instance, you'll notice from Greenwich all the way up to Bridgeport, there's been a lot of modification, I-95. There's new pavement going in from Greenwich towards us. They widened everything around Westport. There's a lot happening with respect to transportation in the interstate highways in Connecticut, sponsored by Mitchell Lamont. He's also doing the same thing with the train stations. Obviously, we're getting a new train station. There's an RFP out for a new train station in Stanford. The bids are due in December, but it's going to be a completely new station with adjacent parcels included and whatnot. He's also trying to improve the tracks so that they can actually, you know, save some more time on the tracks. Obviously, Norwalk is under construction. When that opens up, it'll actually shorten the time to get from New York City to Westport and further up the line, Fairfield, et cetera. So we're located literally right in the middle of the Noroten Heights development and, maybe go to the next slide. So we're right here and these two buildings were probably built in really not much time since nineteen-seventy-five. I bet George, Robert Riley, you'll remember when they were probably built. So anyway, nothing's been done to this site in a long time. We've been tracking it for ten years, called the seller every year for ten years, and finally it got to a point where they decided it was time to close up shop and sell it. What we would have done five, six, seven years ago is very different than what we were thinking about today because of the two developments. So we looked at this as kind of, while it's a small site, it was important for us to get control of it from the standpoint, we wanted to fill in the rest of the area and do it in a way that solves a bunch of things. So it's not quite blight. The original, you know, Noroten Heights development is almost cited for blights, which is, you know, the adjacent parcel to the shopping center adjacent to Palmer's. But it's certainly Class C. It's not anything to write home about and, you know, most of the buildings will be down by the end of, by Saturday. So, you know, we have a history of doing rehabs and redeveloping areas of town. I remember when we did Noroten, George Riley said he used to walk to it from it when he was going to school to Henley School and we changed that neighborhood a bit. We remodeled and rehabbed Nine Old Kings High, which is the largest office building in town until Corbin is completed. And obviously, the theater is now called Darien Place. And the important thing of the theater was, the town always had a plan to connect the Darien Sports Shop to the train station and through a presentation of this committee as well as Mr. Alveney, we made a connection. We'd like Grove Street to be repaved, but the truth of the matter is, we know how to be able to build a bridge from one part to another part of town to basically create that pedestrian walkway to get to, you know, one area to another. So when it came to this site, we said to us, how can we make a difference? What's important? What do we want to accomplish? First thing we want to do is get rid of the blight, right? And we want to do something pretty unique and special. So we said, look, obviously, it's right in the middle of two developments and the point is, is that, and I think we'll show you tonight, how we're building a bridge between the two developments to connect everything. So it'll literally be the connection point between Darien Commons, Darien Crossings, and includes Palmer's in the whole mix. And so you'll see it by the sightlines that get created, the building architecture, which is reflective, and you'll see how it creates an openness that doesn't exist today with adding a ton of landscaping and green space. And I think, we'll talk about public plaza at the end because I think we could get into a lot of discussion, but at the end of the day, right now, we think we have as much as eleven thousand square feet, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little less depending on what the commission, how they view this. So, but it is a small site and we basically have, you know, no matter what we end up with, we're going to be, that five percent rule will be double to triple that, no matter what. So just based on what's here today. So the other thing that we were thinking about was, we wanted to make, we wanted to eliminate some of the traffic on Heights. Not that Heights is that busy of a road, but you have a grid. And while Edgerton has always been sort of a cut-through street and not very important, we wanted to give it some presence and we wanted to make it important. You have a grid, use the grid. And so we took most of the curb cuts off of Heights except for one, and the entrances to these buildings are pretty much on Edgerton and in fact, they're building corners on Edgerton and Heights to give it a presence. The other thing is, if you think back going, when we first created Noroten Heights Zone, Jamie Stevenson at the time really wanted to put some kind of a rotary on. She wanted this to be an important street. We're trying to give it a presence and some importance. So you'll see that in the plans that my colleagues and all of our engineers and architects are here tonight and they'll take you through it. But I think, you know, look, we spent a lot of time on it. You may see things that you like or things you'd like to see changed a little bit or whatever, but I think in general, we, you know, we're trying to figure out how to make it fit and do something that's pretty unique, connects everything together, and at the same time, we all walk out of here and we feel like we, you know, created something we all be proud of. And Noroten Heights, I mean, it's been visited by the governor once. I mean, there's a tour of some sort going on, thinking about it in terms of affordable housing and other uses, but it may become in some ways a model for the rest of the state. I don't really know. I think Jeremy and maybe Steve, you'll have a better sense of that. But I think this accomplishes it. There's only really one buildable site left and it's about a half an acre if you put two sites together. So that's it. With that, I'll turn over to the architects and we'll go from there.
The plan is, the walking tour is Thursday, eleven o'clock if you want to go.
Okay.
Introduce yourself.
Sure. Philip Sharon. I'm an architect. My office is in Fairfield, Connecticut, and the architect for this project. So Mr. Maslin's going to be so kind to be banned away from me, so... This is kind of an overview of the project, right? So as Mr. Caro said, this is Edgerton here. We set the building on the corner of the site. We purposely made the corner a big presence part of the building, right? So we have a staircase, we have some ramps, we have another ramp over here, but we tried to really focus on that corner and kind of frame the corner. So we framed the corner on this side with the building, we framed the corner on this side with all the landscaping. And our site people will walk you through this a little bit better, but, so, one of the things that this does too is it hides all the parking, which is in the back part of the building, which we'll look at the floor plans in a second, but we have two entrances to the site on this side of the bed. One is in the back over here, one's in the front corner over there. So they're both away from the corner. And then there's a crosswalk here so people can walk from this parking lot across to our site. And then there's one entrance to this parking lot over here. Again, both of these are set up to kind of shield the parking from the street. Can we see, can we go to the floor plans? Maybe I can just walk through the building quickly and then we can go back to the renderings. The building is essentially a three-story building, commercial space on the first floor. Yeah, okay, so this is the first floor of the building. There's, this is basically a vanilla box on the first floor. We don't know who's going to go in there yet, so as tenants come in, then we'll subdivide the space accordingly. We, for the time being, plug in doors in all different locations. We have a staircase here because one of the things that we wanted to do here was to try to keep this building elevated because of the fact that this corner floods, but also because of the fact that from here to here, the site drops off somewhere around four or five feet. So in order to keep the building at one elevation, which was important to us, it did require handicap ramps for accessibility here and here, some steps over here. So this is kind of the main entrance on the street level. Now, if you're parking over here, you would use this entrance. Again, depending on how tenants get put into the building, most of the rest of the parking is in the back here. So we envision residents will be mostly parked in the back over here. This area here is purely for the residents of the building. There's two separate entrances, one just for residences, which that staircase would also serve, and then the other entrances for tenants. Again, depending on one, two, three tenants, we do have doors in various locations. The exact locations of the doors could switch a little bit depending on how the space gets subdivided. Can we go to the next slide, please?
Floor plan?
So this is the second floor. The second and the third floors are pretty much, they are mirror images of each other. So as was stated before, twenty units, ten on each floor. We have a center core here so that we can keep as many of the units around the perimeter as possible. Every unit has a balcony to it, so that gives everybody a little bit of their own private outdoor space. We have two elevators in the buildings, the mechanical space, and then the two stairwells. I guess if you just want to go to the top, we can just talk about the roof then. So on the roof, and I know this is part of the text amendment that we need approved, we have a small lobby area over here, so we structured that to meet the five percent requirement that we're asking for. And then we have what's relatively small outdoor patio area that's about seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet on the outside. And then the rest of this is just roof space over here. Can we now go back to the renderings?
Sure. Want to do the basement?
Yeah, actually, renderings. This is actually a rendering of the corner of the building. I know you have the renderings in there.
Yeah.
I think they were before that. So, all right, so here's a rendering of the corner of the building. As I said before, this is kind of the main entrance on the corner. The building's stone on the first floor. We have some sort of band that breaks the first from the second floor, as most buildings. It's got a base to it. The stone gives it a nice heavy base for everything to sit on. And then above it is a combination of wood panels and you'll see in some of these elevations, we've raised up some of these panels to just kind of break up the straight lines that went around the corner of the building. The units are mostly glass. It's got a little bit of an urban feel to it. We feel that it keeps the building a little bit lighter, both inside and outside. And as I said earlier, you can see how the grade slopes around.
In terms of square footage of the building, Phil, how many square feet is it? Thirty thousand feet?
The total building is about thirty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred square feet plus the basement and the roof area. The two residential floors are about thirteen-thousand-six-hundred square feet on each one. And the first floor, as was stated earlier, is about ninety-five-hundred square feet of retail, but it's a total of about ten-thousand-four-hundred square feet. And then we have the basement in addition to that. So this is a shot as if you were coming from our other project, coming from Palmer's area, coming down the street, going towards Edgerton, which is over here. And again, you'll see the stone here. And one, another reason for the stone aside from they give it a nice heavy base and one of the reasons for picking out some of the stones that we would like to use is that although the architecture's not the same as our other project, right, that's down the street, everybody knows that. But we did try to use the stone to try to tie a little bit of it together because if you remember the other project, the whole corner of the building is stone that's very similar to this stone that's here. So it kind of at least gives a little bit of relationship there, right?
So it's not going to be a Connecticut stone?
No. Correct. It might be from Connecticut, but... So then the building itself, the thought is that these become metal panels on the building, these become wood panels here. And as I said, in order to kind of break up the line of going across the whole building, we extended these up towards the top and then the rest of it is basically just windows in the units, storefront on the first floor. Again, depending on who the tenant is and how it gets subdivided, that might move around a little bit. And then we do have space, some parking space under the building. We also have some of the public space that's covered on parts of the second floor because as I just mentioned on the square footage is, the second and third floors are about three-thousand square feet bigger than the first floor, so they do extend over the first floor.
So where's Heights Road?
This is Heights Road right here, where the cars are.
Okay.
All right, so this is Heights Road.
And the quarter is right where you put us.
This is, yeah, this is Edgerton over here.
Got it.
And you need that parapet for all your, to conceal all your mechanicals?
Right. So the parapet hides all the mechanicals, correct. Right? So, I mean, we'll set the mechanicals back somewhat anyway, but yes, the reason, the main reason for the parapet is that it'll hide all the mechanicals. We feel it's a much nicer look than trying to put screens up on the mechanicals. The railings on the building, as I said, everybody has their own apartment, every apartment has their own balcony. The thought is that these would be glass railings on the balconies. And depending on what side of the building on, you'll have different... The railings on the building, as I said, everybody has their own apartment, every apartment has their own balcony. The thought is that these would be glass railings on the balconies. And depending on what side of the building you're on, you'll have different views, obviously. This is, this is the Edgerton side of the building here. So, down there would be Heights Road. And so, you'd be looking this way towards the train.
So, I'm standing in Bear Burgers parking lot.
I guess I...
I'll trust you on that. I don't know the names.
You gotta get out in the field, Phil. Come on, man, can't work from your office. Darien on Fairfield.
Is that over there?
Get on your bicycle.
Yeah. In any case, I mean, so that's an overview of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Amy, you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. So, this is, so this, just one last thing. This is the side, the parking lot side, that you don't really see from the street. But this would be, so this area here, again, what I think is nice is that you have your own private entrance for the, for the residents. And then, the commercial space will have their own entrances. This walkway here is actually the walk that connects to Palmer's, that we're planning on being part of our, our public space.
Now, where's the public space that Matt Pop's thing is known as? Area, Jesus.
A mat of steel, are you drawing, brother?
Area six.
Is it? Oh, that's, that's, that's. This one's area six.
Maybe that's Matt's.
Oh, there you go.
That's Matt's. I'm just trying, from that, go back to the other one.
Is this area six?
No, no, we're serious. Six is the blue.
Is this?
No, dark blue.
No. Yes, okay, we'll go back to the render then.
Bingo.
The one we were just at.
Bingo. So, where's that space?
Yeah. So, the area six space, yeah, it's right, it's right underneath the building, so it's right over there. So, it's actually over here.
It's right there.
Oh, six is tucked in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it's in front of the cars, the cars are partially, it's in front of those things over there.
So, that could be a potential... The part about the public plaza space, and I don't want to get you off track, is the public plazas in federal became fungible, right? So, they got moved around. So, for argument's sake, when Multo came in, they wanted dedicated public plaza space in front of their store. They wanted actually exclusive public, exclusive plaza space. So, when they had a space there that was public, it got moved. So, that's where it can be fungible, so you don't have to lock yourself in. Because if that lands up being, you know, Starwood Coffee...
Right, if there's a cafe or something there.
Right? Your Plaza Six just got taken over by Starwood. You know, you'd rather, you know, move it someplace else. That's why I've kind of, you know, if you have, if you do have 11,000 feet and you move this one, which is 600 and something, maybe, no, 300 and something? This one's 790 if you move it to someplace else, or you lose it. You know, that's what's important. That's why I don't want, when we get into all this other stuff, I don't want it, you know, dwelling that it's locked and stowed.
Plaza with the table of...
Because some of the, some of the public plaza spaces might make sense, some don't.
But there's a table up here.
Yeah, I see that. Right, yeah, so six is 800, six is 790 square feet.
790, yeah. Great. Okay. Amy, you want to go first with questions?
I'll reserve my questions, not for public plaza space, because I imagine that's going to be Matt Pop's discussion. So, this is, I guess the question I have for you is the feedback that you've gotten from ARB, what do you envision going back to them with that is not indicative of what you're showing us today?
Well, so, my response to that question is what I'm showing you today is not at all what went to ARB.
Okay.
Okay, we've made a lot of changes from then, from ARB. Part of the changes are the fact that when this went to ARB, the whole top of this building was a mansard roof.
Okay.
With a sloped roof on it. Didn't have any of, any of this architecture to it. One of their comments was about this whole long line across the tile. So, one of the reasons we did this to break it up. We didn't have any of this as metal panels. This was all stone all the way up here. So, we've made a bunch of changes from when we went to ARB already. We've also met with staff a couple times to talk through some of these things. So, we're still developing some of this. We took the corner and we raised it up a little bit taller also. We also, some of these were really narrow pieces that, that we, everybody felt wasn't really doing it justice, so we kind of fattened up the corners of that. So, we've gone through all of the ARB comments and I think we've addressed a lot of them.
The one thing that they wanted to see that we didn't do was they wanted to see two parallel buildings that face Heights Road, very similar to Darien Commons. We had that railroad-style two buildings, and they wanted the buildings to basically one facing Heights and the other one facing the back end of the other building, which is almost impossible to do with such a small site.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is, the other thing that came out of ARB too is this whole site plan, right? A lot of this is different from what it used to be. This whole area over here was completely different than this. Some of these walks and everything were also different. So, we've addressed a lot of the ARB stuff to just come to you.
Okay.
What you're seeing tonight is not what ARB saw.
I mean, that's typically the, usually we send you ARB first, then you come to us, then you go back to them.
Yeah.
I mean, if we talked about, et cetera, that guy didn't go for ARB the first time and he, what he went in with, he didn't come out with the same thing.
Right.
He either did Trailmore Crow over at Thorndale. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
Yep.
Good for you.
For building, sure.
We'll come back.
I'll come back.
Yeah, because we just have to do parking, anything for Phil, Jamie?
So, the landscape is still going back to ARB.
Well, Matt Pop's going to explain the landscape too.
But they requested this specific.
Right, this has been more flushed out, but ARB never saw that.
But that's what they requested.
Essentially, they don't see anything you're seeing tonight.
Their advisory, remember?
I watched, meaning I was...
Whatever, but their advisory.
But that's all I have for them.
Look, and candidly, we, I mean, in particular, think that we have a better building now than we did based on everybody's input.
That's, that's the goal at the end of the day, right?
Hundred percent.
Everybody says when they come out of the whole process, it looks better at the end. I mean, the one I saw, I thought, okay, Wendy's Restaurant with the mansard, not meaning to be disrespectful, but...
That's okay.
It's the first thing I saw.
I got thick skin, it's not...
Yeah, you've been around a while. George?
If I can, looking on the perspective with Heights Road in front, where you've got some cars, that's your photo there.
This one?
Yeah, it just, so that is not a straight line, doesn't look like whatever on the road. It seems curbed somehow. Why would that be curbed? Are you providing for parking there or what's going on there?
I think it's, I think it's just the way the perspective is cut, because the street is straight there.
It's a straight line.
Yeah, it should be.
It's a straight line, it's just the way the perspective is cut, is I see where you see it looks at over here.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're not doing any street parking along Heights Road the way we did it in front of Goddard School and all that stuff?
But we are on Edgerton.
Right, we're on Heights Road now.
Yep.
I got you.
Right. We are in Edgerton.
Yep.
That's fine. Okay. And somebody else is going to talk about parking, right? You're just doing basic design or whatever.
We're just doing the building part, but...
Yeah, no, no, I'm saying you, there's another, there's, you have SLR here, right?
Yes.
We're, we're in the process of responding to their first round of comments, and so it's just a very preliminary discussion that we're going to have.
No, I mean, it's, it's, from, from a P and Z perspective, most of these projects take five years to flush out. I mean, we started with, we started with Heights Crossing before COVID.
Oh, moving back.
Well before COVID.
Well, well before.
Right? It's, I don't think the last tenant's open, I don't think the last apartment's been leased, but it, it makes me feel a little bit better when Mr. Vaccaro says he's been staring at this thing for 10 years. You know, I mean, we all know that they only bought it around Labor Day, and that's, that's a month. So, this thing did not evolve in 30 days. It's been, they're releasing somebody's head for 10 years. I don't really have any questions relative to that. I mean, I think the building looks, looks great to me. Next piece, Bob, what do you got?
Rob Pryor. Amy, to answer your question about what was left open at the Police Commission, I had a discussion with the captain about that before the meeting. There's no posted speed limit and no speed limit approved for that part of Edgerton. And that's what they're probably looking into, how to post it and, and so...
We, I was at the meeting and that's exactly, we asked them to put some speed limits in because we see people that race through these places and it's really dangerous, particularly if you look at the pedestrians that are moving around Noront Heights in the mornings and throughout the day. You have people that are walking their kids to the Goddard School, you have, it's all different. So, but you'll see it in the traffic report. People don't speed on Edgerton anyway, but there's no posted limit.
It's probably going up Edgerton because you're trying to make that light before it turns.
Maybe.
The unusual thing is, if you look at the approved speed limit list from the state, the 20 mile an hour speed limit on Edgerton is from Edgerton, from West Avenue up...
Yeah.
To, what is it, Middlesex?
Middlesex.
But there's nothing on the list for this part of it. And that's, that's what was left open.
If you go whipping through, if you go whipping up Edgerton between West Avenue and Middlesex, you get people throwing pellets at you head.
Yeah.
Good evening, Rob Pryor, professional engineer and land surveyor with Land Tech, representing the applicant. So, I'm going to just go through the general nuts and bolts of the site plan a little bit, talk about how we kind of got to where we got to, and I'll talk briefly about stormwater utilities, soil erosion control, Fort Matt, talks about all the landscaping. So, previously discussed, we're looking at three separate lots, somewhat non-sequentially numbered. Two lots to the west of Edgerton make up approximately 0.94 acres, and then we have approximately 0.4 acres on the east side of Edgerton, both sites to the north of Heights Road. Total site area, 1.34 acres, a little bit less. When we look at the bulk requirements with regard to site building coverage, developed area, we're looking at this as a combined development site, all three together. The, obviously, we not meet all the setback requirements as far as building setbacks, et cetera.
I'm sorry, you said you obviously do or don't?
Obviously do. We meet all the building setbacks per...
I thought, I thought you said...
And, and to clear that up, that's predicated on the fact that obviously the existing property line between 90 and 100 is going to go away.
Yep.
So, in the current conditions, or what I would say is the pre-current conditions, because a little bit different there now than we were seven weeks ago.
Can I interrupt one second? In the application, does it say you're merging those two lots?
Well, in commercial, it's technically not necessary, but they're in common ownership and this is one combined site plan.
Right, I get it.
And we've done it that way, you know?
No, you, every single one in Corbin got combined, every single one in Federal got combined.
That's because, yeah, but not Fairfield Green.
Heights Commons got, or Noron Commons got combined.
Darien Green or Fairfield Green or whatever it is now, Fletcher, two buildings on four different types of ownership.
That was never, that was not a knockdown, a tear down.
That was approved by the commission years ago.
Wasn't a, wasn't a tear down?
Uh, no.
If you're listening to what I'm saying, I would suggest that you combine it.
Well, combined in the site, so...
I would suggest that you combine it.
I got it.
Got it? Thank you.
So, in the current condition, this, this corner is not particularly pedestrian-friendly. There are sidewalks that come down the west side of Edgerton and around the corner, but then you've got sort of an open wide curb cut that services the 90 Heights Roads property. And then, you've got essentially the same condition on 100 Heights Road where it's basically, there's no sidewalk, it's basically, basically property line to property line curb cut. And then, on, on the east side of Edgerton, there's no sidewalk coming down Edgerton at all. And this, there's no sidewalk along the frontage of the site either. Basically, cars are kind of freewheeling it in and out of the site. We know that there's use by people who don't want to pay the, the cost of parking across the street for the train station, use that site now. So, those are the...
They did, but they paid, they paid the guy.
Did they?
Yeah, they paid the guy.
So, the goal here was really to try to improve both the safety for pedestrians, create an obvious connections for pedestrians from, you know, left, you know, east to west here. And what I'll say is there is, there was provisions made as part of the Darien Commons up here. If you go up here and see a little, little piece of sidewalk that they put in here.
Yep.
It doesn't go anywhere. You know, you'd have to kind of walk along either on the grass or on the street to get it out.
Right, but that was specifically designed to match up to this.
It sounds like somebody else who's been thinking about this for a lot of years too.
And it worked, it worked.
It better work.
So, and, you know, and I think John went through and explained why the building is where it is, but, you know, we brought the building relatively tight to the street to reinforce that importance, put the cars behind the building, move the parking away from the, the street so that it could be better screened.
Do you envision sidewalks on both sides that come down Edgerton?
Yes.
Sidewalks that go in front of both parcels, left and right. Do you envision a crosswalk that connects those sidewalks from...
Yeah, I think, when I get to the rendered pad, I think it'll be, it'll be clearer, maybe.
So, you can see it there, but yes.
So, we're, we're proposing a total of 81 parking spaces, 53 on the large site, 28 on the smaller site. Based on a full office use of the first floor, we would be in excess of the amount of parking spaces that we need. We wouldn't need, wouldn't need any relief from the, the required parking.
What's the parking for office, Cameron?
Four per thousand.
So, it's four, it's four times 9,500, right? And then, the upstairs apartments, like, it's like two, it's like two times, two times 24.
That number is holding. You want to go to the rendered?
No, no. I think we need 28 for the, I think we need, I don't know, 52 for the residential and 28 for the, or opposite, 28 for the apartments and 52...
Nice, no, it's more than that. The apartment should be about...
21.
Should be 1.75 on average.
Well, there's, I think there was, there's different for the...
Right, I got you.
So, in any event, I think, I think the, the parking we have that we could, you know, we could support probably a split of about 2,500 square foot of like retail or quick serve restaurant, plus the balance being office. Otherwise, if you went for more retail and more office, we would need some relief from the, from the parking regulations.
So, you're, you're envisioning no more than 2,500 retail, is that what you're...
We're, I don't think we're envisioning any square footage now, but I think the intent is that, the intent is perhaps that it'll all be office and then we don't need any relief relief at all, we would have some excess parking.
Okay.
But if that didn't happen and there was, and it was split between office and.
Yep.
You could accommodate about 2,500 square feet of something, retail or quick serve restaurant.
With the existing spots you have.
Right, otherwise, if you got, if it became one big restaurant, we would need some relief.
The thought around office, just to be clear, 'cause I'm not sure that you're aware, but we're short office in Darien since Thorndale came down.
Mm-hmm.
We definitely, that was 108, 110,000 square feet that went away. And even with the building of Corbin, Corbin replaces the Corbin building, the old Bank of America building, so you really net-net, you're short.
Yep.
So people are continuing to look for office space, and the reality is, is that with all the new retail that's been developed between downtown and New York Heights, you need people during the day, so there are lots of office tenants shopping, looking for this type of space.
Great.
So, of those spaces, we've, we've talked about potentially reserving 20 spaces, being numbered spaces for the, for the residential tenants, and those will be located 14 and 6 on the western side of the site. The site also proposes on-street parking along the western side of Edgerton. We are proposing two loading zones.
And grow up quick, the entrance for the tenants to get into the building is where?
Be in the back.
Is it closest to the parking area that you're earmarking for your tenants?
Yes.
Because if it's not, they're gonna park in the other place.
Right, right, so that, the retail, the entry to the re, sorry, to the residential is in the back corner of the building.
Got it, okay, moving on.
Obviously, we've got, we've got four handicap spaces close to those entrances. We are proposing some parallel parking along Edgerton, three, three parallel spaces plus a loading zone, on-street loading zone, similar to what we've done, we did down at Heights Crossing, we have one. I want to say the one at Heights Crossing is signed so that after about 10 or 11 o'clock, it becomes basically a parking space, it's loading up to, for the morning. We also have another loading space onsite, we're cracked by, by the regulations we're required F2.
So at, at the end of the day, for the residential, you're supposed to have 37 spaces on the, on the site to the left, you have 53, so you get 20 extra.
I'll take your word for it.
I'm not getting paid to do this, you should know this.
I, I, you know, I have, I have, well, it's not the only job I'm doing.
He's paying, you're not me.
Plus, my eyes aren't that good, so I can't, I can't even read the small print on this.
It's all right.
But in any event, then we have a.
I'm trying to help your cause.
A refuge enclosure.
If you only, only 37 parking spaces.
And I appreciate that.
And you have 53, you're up, you're above.
Yeah, no, and that's where we think, that's where we think we are.
Correct.
And we do have a, a refuge enclosure toward the back corner of the parking lot.
So the, the required two parks, the required two loading spaces, where again?
So we have one at the northwest corner of the, of parking.
Right, and where's the other one?
And then the other one is the off, on-street.
Which is the same thing you did at?
Heights Crossing, yes, yeah. So the thought would be that most loading would happen, car, trucks would enter from Heights Road, they would try to use the onsite one, they'd pull, they're, they're basically gonna unload from the back, so they would pull in, offload the back to the, you know, wherever they were gonna load into the building. If that space was taken, they would drive around and they would pull into the one out on the street.
Great.
Let's see. Oh, as far as the, we've had discussions, they're not, it's not shown on the plans now, but there will be some kind of control or use control with regard to this parking lot, meaning if it's gonna be an office use, then there could be, we could put a gate in there so that only people with a code or, or whatever, a tag, would be able to use that parking lot, so that it doesn't get used by unauthorized people. I suppose you could also do a sticker system to identify people who had the, the rights sort of to park there.
At, at Heights Crossing, you also have a meter, not a meter lot, a gated lot where the arm goes up.
Yes, yeah, the, the second floor of the, because the second floor of the parking garage at Heights Crossing was designed for the ten, for the residents of the, you know, the residential units, so it was gate controlled.
Do you also think, relative to, to parking, remember that because it's a mixed use, you're allowed to do a shared parking agreement, so, by, by rights, the commission can grant a shared parking agreement, where a different number than what's required by the letter of the law. Before you move on to the next section, remember, you have Palmer's employee lot, I'm gonna call it right behind you, where my kids park when they go to Greenlight Auto Driving School. Is that connected to this in any way, shape, or form?
No.
No.
No, there's a, there'll be a, there's a, there's a landscape island between the two, between the two lots.
So we're not, we're not playing in the same sidewalks as those guys?
No, no. I think the only last thing I wanted to say is that, you know, we'll, we will provide, we haven't, it was shown on our initial set of drawings, but those drawings have changed based on input, and failed to make it on this set of plans, but we will make ready the required 10% spaces for EV charging on the site, so it's likely to be along this back area where, you know, we would, we would need, I guess, nine spaces, 10% of the total spaces.
When did that come into effect?
A new state statute.
Couple of years ago?
Not within the past year or two, Rob.
Yeah, you have to make, you don't have to, it doesn't necessarily install.
Right.
But you have to at least make, you have to at least get the, get the conduits over to that area, and generally, you know, B20 has put some chargers in.
You have to put the infrastructure in for it.
Okay, and then you can, you can farm it out to Rivian or Tessa, and they pay $50 per space per room.
Okay.
That's what it is, man, I do.
So I'm gonna, I gotta give credit to Matt because I stole his rendering for this exhibit, but, you know, and as John kind of alluded to and sort of Phil, you know, the site plan, I wish I would say that the site plan, you know, I'm some brilliant site planner or something, but it's really a collaborative effort. We started in one place, you know, ARB certainly had some input into it, you know, John, obviously, has been thinking about this for a lo, for a long time. And then we also got some real thoughtful input from, from the P&amp;Z staff as far as start, started trying to tie this all together.
I'm gonna give you one of mine, too.
Rob, would you show them, if you're walking from Darien Commons, how do you walk through the site to get to?
Do you have to talk to him, right, then he can ask us?
No, no.
Because you didn't. Joe Picaro, developer, town resident as well, Rob, would you show him, them, if you were walking from Darien Commons, how you'd walk through to like the Palmer's, the post office on Palmer's Lot?
Right, so, yeah, I mean, let me, let me.
We also have that rendering.
Kind of go through the, the improvements to the pedestrians, so we're continuing the existing sidewalk that starts up here at Darien Commons, continuing down to Heights Road, and then along Heights Road, to where we can't, to the end of the property essentially, we can't continue it any further.
It actually, it wraps behind, if, if, if you keep going, it wraps to the front door of.
It comes across their driveway, then basically across the storefronts there, right, that's where the walkway is.
Sanders Cleaners, and then it goes.
And the liquor store there, you kind of get, it gets, it gets the pedestrians out of where the cars are, because that all, that's all pull-in parking there.
You mean like this?
No, it kind of comes up, and then if the building's like here, it kind of comes up against the building.
Yeah, you go, you go front door, you go from the front door of Gregory's Coffee to a protected, on a protected sidewalk all the way to Leary Liquors. So you have to connect Leary Liquors to the post office, that's your assignment. I'm kidding, I'm not kidding around, that's what you gotta do.
But can't go on Leary's land.
The only thing you're missing is, is driveway, but you have the same protected.
Their driveway's right here.
Right, well, you have a driveway too, where you have a crosswalk on it, see the crosswalk you have in your driveway?
Over here.
Right, no, that goes into your building. Keep going over, 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 bingo.
Yeah.
Right, you got the same thing going into the post office, you have the same thing going into all the other driveways on, on that, so somebody's gotta straight the driveway in front of Leary's.
We can straight it, that's not a.
We can straight it, but if they'll let us.
Yeah, of course.
I seem to remember something about a sidewalk along here during a previous application.
You might have, and I could swear.
I have a vague recollection of that.
There's a portion of sidewalk that was put in.
Greg Palmer.
There's a small piece of sidewalk that was put in.
Here you are.
I think in this island.
Yeah, it's expensive.
I want to say that, yeah, I want to say that the.
It was a tree removed by someone.
It was thanks to Strong's suggestion. So anyway, and then there's existing sidewalk that comes down the, the west side of Edgerton, we're gonna connect to that, continue that down around the corner, crosswalk. We're also proposing a mid-block crosswalk here, and that's to really get, to really bring it to play, foot traffic from Darien Commons across, and then through our site, we've provided this sort of pedestrian esplanade kind of thing through the, through the site, across this rear driveway, continues on, and then ends up basically right at the corner where the post office is, so.
Front door of the post office. That, that, that entrance was closed probably 20 years ago.
Can, can you, now that I see these trees here, can you show me between that pedestrian crosswalk where vehicles can cross that? Where, where a vehicle and a person would intersect?
So, in this, meaning this.
Yep.
So right here.
Right there.
There's a, this, this connects the, the two parking lots, there's a driveway through here, and there's a, gonna be a pattern, we're looking to do a patterned crosswalk.
But that's the only spot, not any of the other.
No, this is all, this would be all continuous, so it'd be just this one crossing. So, you know, if you're coming from Darien Commons, you'd, you'd have to cross the street, and then you'd have to cross the driveway. But that way, then you could walk all the way up to Heights Crossing, you'd have to climb the stairs.
The majority of crossing that driveway, I would say three quarters of it is a protected sidewalk that is not gonna surprise, here comes Grandma coming across and not realizing she's intersecting a sidewalk, there's only that one spot that will presumably be very obvious to someone behind the wheel that they are going to cross a sidewalk.
Exactly, and again, we're looking to do a textured colored sidewalk there.
The other thing that we're doing.
Let me give you, let me give you an example, if you go down Grove Street and you're going up Grove Street towards the sports shop.
Yep.
Joe Picaro's, when they did the Playhouse, put in a protected sidewalk, which is solid brick. And when you go over that, you're gonna go, those humps.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to ascertain, where on this plan that happens.
The, we're trying to do the same thing on Edgerton on that new proposed crosswalk, is to raise it a little bit, hopefully slow down traffic as well.
Okay, got it.
And then you, you know, you obviously have the existing crosswalks to get, you know, across Edgerton down here.
But there's none there.
And down, and across.
There isn't any there now, right?
Yeah, there is.
There is.
Yeah.
It's white, it's white paint.
Five hundred times a day.
And then, they might be faded a little bit, but they're, they're there, they're there. And then there's a crosswalk that comes, there's a mid-block crosswalk that goes over to the train station, so, you know, really you gotta.
What I want you to do is do one of the.
Part of this, you're gonna be able to spruce that up?
I, I think that, so, mid-block crosswalks, traffic fellow will tell you, hates them. So I would say, I'd stick to one.
No, well, I'm gonna tell him, go to downtown Greenwich, and it's just a mid-block crosswalk that's a square box, and Greenwich's got the highest rents in the country, and go to downtown Westport, mid-block on Main Street, they have, so I don't care what he says.
I just heard.
He can get his car, go up there and look at them. I was just in Thornwood last weekend, they had the same exact thing, you know.
I just heard a P&amp;Z discussion in Westport last night about this block-the-box thing, hate it.
Okay.
Hate it. So I'll just, I'll put that out there.
Tenants in the corner of Elm Street and Main Street have the highest rents of all of Westport.
Yeah, I don't think that's because of the crosswalk. I think that may be a little more geographically related.
Go there, 12 no.
But the, the sidewalk on Heights would be very similar to the sidewalk in front of the Wells Fargo, it'll continue all the way down, it's about seven, seven and a half feet wide, is, is that about right, Rob?
Yeah, that's, it's, it's wide in front of this, this store, I think it's more like six feet, where we, we've kind of got some plantings in front of the building. Couple other things I just wanted to talk about site plan-wise, is I highlighted the outline of the upper two stories of the building with the pink so that you can kind of see that, but, you know what, and I think John alluded to this when he was talking about the, sort of this visual corridor type of thing, so, you know, right now, there's a building here that's kind of a wall from pretty much, you know, from the back.
Yep.
So, you know, you're not getting any vision up through here, you know, we're creating that, so cars coming sort of in a west-to-east direction on Heights Road will then sort of be able to look through there a little bit, much more now than they can now. And then, you know, the big part of, a big part of this plan and a big part of our public plaza space is obviously this L-shaped area down on the corner of Edgerton and Heights Road on 188, 188 parcel. I think it's very interesting, it's much different than the public plaza space that we did on Heights Crossing. When you think about Heights Crossing, very formal, very manicured, clean, this is very soft, very green, you know.
How much square footage is that greenery, that block of green?
I would say about 5,600, that one spot.
According to Matt Pop, it is.
5,786.
5,786. You're studying your notes.
I knew it was 50, I said 5,600.
But you're paying him to test it a little bit.
Oh, yes, I'm gonna.
Go back, go back for a second, the, the dividing between the post office and the drag cleaner parking lot line and your parking lot line.
So that's also a planted island, so this doesn't show great up on that rendering, but I think we, we had a plan that showed that being buffered with plantings. That, plantings would have, there's, it's a, there'll be a narrow island about three feet or so wide, but, and, and part of those plantings will end up having to be on the adjacent property owner's property, the Palmer's Lot or the Palmer's site, so obviously, you know, we'll have to get agreement from them to do that buffering, but there's no vehicular connection between those two lots, and we're looking to do some, we're looking to do a line of screening, but certainly Matt will talk more about that.
So Matt Pop's gonna tell us about that, right?
And so Matt will tell us how 5,786 square feet grows to 11,000 square feet?
And I think that we have an exhibit that talks about all the, we, and I guess, you know, thinking about it, we've created a bunch of different spots that we're thinking could meet the requirements as public plaza space.
Okay.
And what I think is interesting about that is that there are very, there's a lot of differences in them, you know, you have certainly a, an air, big area that's not associated with the building at all, you know, and then you have other areas that, you know, are definitely associated with the building, some undercover, you know, some will be undercover, and then, you know, some that are, you know, and so I, I think that, you know, that mix of, that mix of different spaces is, is kind of an interesting concept, and, I mean, it's up to you, obviously, to determine what counts and what doesn't, and I think that'll obviously educate, inform us as to whether or not we still need the, the reduction in public plaza space. Next slide, Rob. Stormwater, we've designed a stormwater system in compliance to the town requirements, we meet or exceed the town requirements, this is designed.
Yes, based on, when's the new regs going?
September 21st, so this was submitted before then.
But if, but we meet.
How was it submitted before then, did they own the property then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Closed in.
This application was submitted?
No, we closed in, we closed in early August, and this was submitted in August. So we, but we do, we do meet, I think we meet generally the new requirements.
Yeah, we gave you guys the heads up to make the new requirements.
So I, I believe that we took that into account when we did our stormwater.
So you, you'll, you'll be able to identify where it doesn't meet the new requirements?
I haven't seen the new requirements, I know that the new requirements have been upgraded, I haven't seen.
So then how can you make the statement that you think generally it meets?
Because I think Joe Canis said that, it is reported.
Okay.
So, we have, we have several stormwater management elements here, you know, the general stormwater design for the main lot is collection by catch paces and underground piping, then we propose an underground detention system, concrete galleries, open bottom, low infiltration, if you're wondering about the shape of the thing.
Yeah, how many, how many, how big is it? Because I know the one that's underneath Darien Commons is about 211 square meters.
I would say it's not as big as that.
No, no, it's definitely not as big as that.
I think we have 60, there's, there's 68-foot by eight-foot square units, and they're two and a half feet, feet high.
68 by eights?
Yes.
And they're two and a half feet, okay, so they're not that deep.
No, they are, they're, they're not like the system that we put over at the Heights Crossing, which were very deep units, and the difference is, that system wasn't designed to infiltrate because it, we needed deep system, and it wasn't groundwater, it has a liner around it, totally different type of system, these are shallow, soils are better here, groundwater is a little bit deeper, so we're able to actually use that and actually infiltrate, use the, take advantage of the infiltration that we're able to get. That system will then discharge, be metered through a outlet control structure, and then be metered to the existing stormwater system in Heights Road. The 188 Heights Road, we're using a combination of permeable asphalt in the parking stalls, and then a small gallery system for the, the regular standard asphalt, and then we're using some permeable pavers for the portions of the sidewalk that are completely within the, within the property.
Are you concerned about the permeable asphalt?
I would guess this would make sense, because, I mean, in that last application, we said the permeas, so the permeas asphalt, taxi doesn't work, right? The only time, and what people started doing is putting in permeas pavers, which if you go up to Atria, that happened there. The only place where I've seen this, and I don't know the final answer, is the Rotten Presbyterian's got it, on a larger scale than, than somebody's house.
We, yeah, I.
Rotten Presbyterian's got it big time.
The, we did the same type of application at the Westport Y, we did permeable pavement there.
I sprayed it at Westport.
How long ago was that?
Um.
It's five years ago, it's a long time ago.
Yeah, probably five years ago or so, they did an expansion, and that was how we handled some of the stormwater there. We also have another job in Westport, we're doing a private road fully in permeable pavers, so, you know, both systems are good, both. So, you know, both systems are good, both systems are good, they both require maintenance. Permeable pavement is a, you know, a prime treatment, best management practice as, as listed in the Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual and.
In your opinion, what's the maintenance, the crux of maintaining them well?
You have to vacuum them.
Have to vacuum.
How often?
You have to, you have to vacuum them like, you know, and you, and, and what they typically do, what I would say is that it takes, I've heard a lot of people talk about that these things get plugged right up. That doesn't really happen. They get plugged up over time, but if you vacuum them twice a year, you can, you can maintain these almost indefinitely.
It's like carpet in your house. You have to suck this stuff out of them.
And again, that system would, that system would, will, you know, ultimately be metered through an outlet control structure and then discharged into the existing system. I did hear something about, well, what if the permeable pavement all failed? How would this work? We still have a catch basin here, surface catch basin, so you wouldn't get, you wouldn't get all the detention, if that totally failed, you wouldn't get all the stormwater control, but you would still get some detention from the underground system and you would get control from that water overflowing, you know, the parking lot by the fact that there's a catch basin there. So the catch basin sort of also acts as the emergency overflow if the permeable pavers weren't working.
No, you said, you said permeus asphalt.
Permeus, permeable asphalt, I'm sorry.
Okay, I guess there's, there's a distinct difference. So best practice is permeal, permeal pavers or permeal asphalt?
The, either, either any kind of permeable pavement. So permeable pavers are a subclass of permeable pavement.
Right, but which one's better?
In my opinion, the pavers are better.
Because the, the reason why it matters is because that's their parking lot. If my tuss was parked in that parking lot and I'm an office tenant on the side and it gets soaked and wet and I'm coming back for the Ranger game and my car is flooded because your asphalt didn't work, I'm going to be pretty mad.
I, I think that, I think I'm going to have to deal with that.
This building is a prime building for someone that's an office tenant to jump on the train, go to Madison Square Garden, come back February eighteenth after the game's over and pick up their car at the train station.
Remember that's going to have a deed on it.
Right, but I know, I, I've worked there.
Yeah, oh, okay, I got you.
The pass for that is going to be very expensive.
The other, the other thing about this.
I'm dead serious.
The other thing about this lot currently as it is today, if you drive by it, it's a punch bowl. We're not going to, it's going to be raised up to street level, it's actually a little bit higher than street level, so that it's not, no longer going to be a collection basin for pond of water during.
Cars to, on rainy days today, and today doesn't really matter because it's, it's not a parking lot, it's, it's a black hole. So rainy days today, people that paid the guy that used to cut the grass that worked out of garage, he couldn't park it on rainy days. And I'd come back from Ranger game, if my car was in there, I live, I wouldn't park it, I'd go park at Palmer's after work. That's the reason why, because if you're going to spend all the money to do this and not do it right and not, and forget to, to cover it out or sell it to the next guy and that guy doesn't vacuum the, the permeus asphalt, you know, twice a year.
Eventually it will fail.
Because that's in a way, you're throwing down, you're throwing down salt, you're throwing down sand, you know, starting December first.
Typically one thing about the, the pavers or permeable pavement is you don't need to, you don't need to deice because the water doesn't sit out.
I didn't say deice, I said sand.
Well, you don't need to do any of that. You necessarily, you, you essentially don't sand or salt or do that on the permeable pavers because the, A, you plow it clean, it doesn't, it, the water has someplace to go. When that water, sun hits it in the water, it doesn't ice up because the water goes down. So you really don't do deicing or, or sanding on permeable pavers.
At Atria, where they have that stuff, you go there in February, it's sanded and silted.
That's very unfortunate.
You don't want any of those people living in Atria slipping involved in trouble because you've helped a lot more than a vacuum truck.
So I, I know, I just wanted to talk a little bit, Phil, no, Phil talked a little bit about, you know, the stair entrance at the, at the front corner of the building and I, I just wanted to go over the elevation so we kind of understand what we're dealing with here. Existing elevation about eighty back here, seventy-eight, seventy-six, seventy-three. So, you know, you're going, you're really pitching all toward Heights Road, kind of sort of from the northeast, from the northwest corner to the southeast corner. And in order to keep the building so that we're not pushing the building into the ground, you know, we kind of, we have to kind of keep the finished floor even in the corners and floors level, building comes out of the ground a little bit here and that's why you need the stairs. We do have a ramp so that if, you know, obviously it's ADA accessible, so you know, someone that's in a wheelchair and he's, can just kind of, can just go up the ramp to get to that height, but you also could just use the stairs.
It's the same theory as Goddard School at Heights Crossing because it's high at Hollow Tree Road.
It is, it is. And we can, we can talk about how we would love that building to be a little bit higher even because along Hollow Tree Road, it's kind of, there's kind of a hole there when you come off Hollow Tree. Site utilities, so existing electrical, we're going to be feeding the site off the existing pole line that runs along Heights Road, transformer and then power to the building.
That you bury in all the utilities?
The, the plan, the way the plan shows it now, there's existing overhead wires to the site, we're looking at keep, continuing to have overhead wires to the site, to a span pole and then going underground from there. And that would happen, so we're not looking to add any, we're not adding any more wire crossings, we're going to use the ones that are there, but there would be two because there'll be electrical on this site too to power the site lighting, the gate, that kind of thing, so.
So where are the poles and where, where does it go underground?
So where shall, we, we have existing pole on the street.
Yeah.
We're going across the street to a span pole here and then underground to a, it'll be a pole, it'll be a stanchion mounted meter there on this side, span pole on this, on the corner of the property, underground to the transformer, then underground to the building.
So there's no, there's no overhead wires in front of any of the retail stores, the office stores or the.
No, all the, all the existing, you know, all the existing overhead is over on the railroad side of the property. The blue lines indicate water and fire service, the fire marshal's asked us to put a hydrant on the site. The hydrant may, the hydrant might change where that location is. Fire marshal's away on vacation, a meeting next week to verify where that's going to be, but we did put it, we do show that we're going to probably, we're like, most likely going to have a hydrant.
You can, you can for.
And then we have the, yellow is the gas, gas service to the building. And obviously, you know, we, based on what we know and the discussions we've had thus far, all those, you know, all those service providers are adequate for this building. We don't expect any kind of upgrades that are going to be necessary or system enhancements that we're going to have to do.
It'd be in, in the road.
Right.
Trust me, the two existing ones over there that are now gone, they use about that much power.
Yeah, but I, but even what's, what's in, what's existed in the road is adequate for the site. And I just, the green line shows our, our connection to the San Terry Shore and obviously we have to go to Dutton PCA just to get their, get their approval for that. Last thing for me is just soil erosion control, very quickly. Sites both are going to have a security fence as well as a perimeter silt fence. We've identified two construction entrances for each, one for each site. Show two material stockpiles slash laydown areas. We have a, in this set of plans, we've implemented a riprap plunge pool with a filter sack for dewatering of the, when we're doing foundation excavations. And then all the basins, all the catch basins within the site and around the perimeter offsite that are adjacent to the site, those will all have silt sacks on them during the construction period. With that, I'll answer any questions.
James, you want to go first?
I'd rather wait and hear from Joe first.
Uh, just quickly on Edgerton Street, the parking would not be overnight parking on this.
No, and I think, so, and you know, obviously if this was a restaurant, you'd probably have to have like two-hour parking or something like that, but I, I think you'd do a one-hour parking maybe. I think, I think across the street it's one hour.
It's three hour.
Three hour.
You're talking about Ed.
On the, on, on the Heights roadside. On the Heights, no, on the Heights roadside.
I don't know about Heights Road. Derry Commons is three hours.
But generally it's not going to be tenants parking overnight.
No, it's going to, it's going to be timed parking, so it would be, you know, there would be a limit.
You're talking about the floor space on Heights Road?
These, these parallel spaces over here.
I think it's like an hour.
Might be an hour. George, you talking about the on, on-street parking? On-street parking in front of Heights Crossing, we have, I think it's two-hour parking on the newly created indentation in the Heights Road.
Okay.
There might be one fifteen-minute or like quick, quick serve, like, you know, run-in, run-out space, but.
I know inside the site, there's, there's a bunch of different timings because we had timings for the, the areas we thought were going to be the Goddard School parking areas, we didn't, we want to make sure those turned over and then like Joe said, there is fifteen-minute spaces in front of the quick serves establishments, so.
The police made the two-hour determination.
Dave, when you presented to them, did you, did you go through that?
Um, I think we talked about it. I think we talked about it and we said, I think we, I don't, I don't, I don't think they had any, they, they didn't particularly care one way or the other.
Yeah, okay, I, I just consider it overnight, so it's fine.
Yeah, no, I think, I, no, I mean, there'll be timed and it'll either be, I would expect one hour or two hour.
I, I do want to be clear that the bold black line that goes, so let's see, the northerly aspect of the parking area, and you've got the curb cut from Edgerton there, so, yeah, so there's a, there's that black line below your pen, yeah, that goes right across there. Is that in fact a curb or?
Yeah, that's a curb.
Okay.
So, because you have pull-in, these are all pull-in parking spaces.
Okay.
So that's, that'll be a curb, curb.
Including the, the, uh, delivery area, the loading zone.
Right, so the loading zone is up here, so we would envision that, you know, this will be an ADA ramp here, loading will happen, they'll come down the, the pedestrian walkway and then, you know, into the back of the facility.
Oh, really? Unless they park on the street.
Unless they park on the street and then they'll, they'll come, you know, they'll come around this way and.
So presumably that whole pathway you just described, I know this is a question for perhaps Mr. Pop, but is that part of your plaza square footage that you're envisioning?
We, we have identified that as potential plaza space and, and what we've got is I think seven different areas. And we were, you know, what's your pleasure? It's going to kind of be as far as what counts and what doesn't.
Looking forward to hearing that.
We left it for the end.
Joe Canis, you ready?
I'm ready.
Carry it away, sir.
Any particular slide or you just? Let me know which one you're using.
All right, for the record, Joseph Canis, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, principal engineer at Tye and Bond, who came by the commission for the review of the application, specifically stormwater management and the sedimentary erosion control portions of the project. We issued a letter dated September twenty-fifth, which had, you know, maybe thirty-five comments and, you know, it, it is a lot of comments, but a lot of, I don't see anything here that's a barrier to having these plans go forward. I think they're all resolvable. Answer the question that came up about compliance with the new stormwater manual, there are portions that are, that are compliant with the new stormwater manual, they've used the up, they, they use the updated rainfall totals and they're also using the 1.3 inches of rainfall for their warp ollie storm. Other elements, I haven't checked up yet, I can prepare that analysis in a subsequent memo because obviously the applicant still has to respond to this. But in general, you know, most of the comments were, you know, fairly small in technical nature, just different coordination items, just, you know, clarifying some things in the computations, but like I said, I don't think there's anything here that can't be resolved.
Fantastic.
There's a lot of them though.
There, there is, there is, there is a lot of comments, but, you know, like, like I said, most of them I think they can be handled pretty quickly.
Okay, and, okay, so we don't have an opportunity to respond to all of them.
Right, and, and based on tonight's presentation, I do believe one of my comments was mistaken. I, I had a comment about the cementy space, I thought it was that great, you know, like a courtyard inside the building, but apparently it's on the roof, so that comment will go away.
Plus the site plan's changed a little bit from when you saw it as well.
You made a mistake, Joe. Anything else for the engineers?
You want, now?
I mean, I'd rather wait and see the response and before.
Yeah, I, there, there's a lot here, there's a lot of comments that they would need to want to respond to, so.
Exactly.
We're just spinning our wheels, we just talk about it.
Yeah, once we get the responses, yeah, we'll have a much greater reaction.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd actually like to do Del Rio first.
Okay. I have no slides because they're in the middle of going back and forth on comments. He's asked.
We forgot to upload it. I guess I'm special. Sorry about that, okay, Matt Pop's up.
Dave Sow is here, you want to hear from him?
There you go.
Matt, let me just get your slide up here.
While you're getting it, good evening, Matthew Pop, Landscap Architect, Department of Land Solutions. Just a few comments, Rangers first game tonight, Greenwich Avenue traffic improvements, I think it'd have been better, the public got better, higher rents if they were done correctly, I think so. Not a good, not a fan of Greenwich Avenue traffic improvement. But anyway, I'm a curious landscape designer. Just to declare the, the, the open space here is, actually Rob used my plan to hook the areas up so he, if there's any questions on that, I might call on him to comment on that. I won't repeat what Rob said, but mainly we have sidewalks, just start with the hard skates, sidewalks along the streets, both through here and here. We do have that connection from Palmer's that cuts across, there would be all pavers up through here and you can go up. That was one comment that the ARB wanted us to maybe enhance that and we did greatly, we kind of, you know, highlighted it, we used pavers to delineate it. So that was one change we had from ARB. And the others, we kind of flipped this gathering area here, it was previously over this corner here and somebody, ARB, kind of just said, like, I'll have to cuff, that maybe it might be better over here where it's more active. So this gathering area was, learning here, was kind of shifted to this area, but I think it works out better, it's more visible.
What do you envision in that? Is it just pavers and, when you say gathering area, what does that mean to you?
So, so we, we do have, you know, a couple of benches, we have a bench right down here with the sculpture on it. So it's just something as simple, you know, if we wanted to, we probably could stick a, you know, a piece of art there right in the center of that, but right, right now.
But are there benches throughout?
There's benches throughout, yep. So there's two benches here along Heights Road, we have two more benches here, a bench under this tree here, we have benches back through here, we have benches through here and here and here and one bench up on the Heights on this side, so there's benches throughout. And we do have this serpentine sidewalk, which I kind of like because you sort of have a loop, we wanted to do a small loop and the sidewalk actually connects to the parking area, the previous design at Dan, so I thought that was good to get people instead of walking through the parking area, that they could walk right down through here, cross over and get into the building. One of the other changes from ARB, we kind of have the street trees all the same, so they're kind of alternating for different types, I guess they don't prefer them to be all the same, so the species have changed on that. Also back through here, they wanted some screening behind the back of the building, so we do have some marble providers there that will grow, you know, maybe twenty, twenty-five feet in height, so we do, so that's another, another change from, at least I comments from them. change from, at least on comments from them. As far as the plantings, again, the street trees, you know, kind of the shade trees, the red maples, there's some oaks, kind of pick up the same type of oaks, they used up, up to the north here, a little bit, the willow oak they use, so we're using those in here, too. We have a birch, kind of birch grove over here, somewhat of a focal point area. We do have a couple of cherries through here, three here, and three over here, and again, two types of red maple, some orange beans, and a couple of hackberries. Some pretty durable trees for, you know, kind of an urban setting. We're removing 12 trees on the property, and we're replanting with 42, so it's like a, you know, everyone we're moving, we're replacing with, you know, three, three and a half trees, so I think that's a good mix. As far as, you know, lighting, just a 12-foot-high pedestrian scale pole, you know, warm tone, 3,000 K, dark sky, we're using the same fixtures we're using down the street. It's fairly well lit, I mean, it's not a full candle flame, yep, I kind of spaced them, so I kind of know that this area, it will be, you know, well lit. It's actually well lit throughout this site. We do have a bollard right through here, which we use along this accessway, just again reinforce that walkway through, you know, connection through, so at least that the bollard will be. I did some projects where they, we do have light poles, and we have bollard lighting with the light poles, and actually it looks pretty good. We just did that in Canal Street in Stanford.
There's bollards all over Darian Commons, too, with light poles.
Yep. You know, the one thing about the lighting on the rendering, there was a light pole right in front of the building, that actually got moved to the side, so if you look at the rendering, this, you probably didn't notice it, but there was a light pole and right in, kind of blocking the view, so that got moved out of the way. Again, the steps here, we kind of changed from previous to make them a little bit wider, a more graceful entranceway, and I think, you know, that is it, quickly.
Matt, ARB also wanted a shield between the back of the parking lot and the, no, the rental, the rental, I'm not the rental, I'm sorry, the car driving school, so we added that.
So yes, yep, there's additional plantings there, a couple of shade trees, we've got two light poles through there, too.
Matt, can you walk the commission through your plaza space, and just in terms of what was added to make it plaza, I guess?
Okay, there's another exhibit that had, that.
Here it is.
In the square footage.
Why don't you guys both?
Fred might take a step, because this is my plan, and you kind of threw the color in, so it kind of.
So what we did here, and aside from identify, my role in this, just so everybody knows, was to identify potential places that could be considered plaza, and putting how much square foot each one of those are. So, you know, we, we have identified seven spots, so we have the large.
Yep.
Corner park, we've got these two sort of areas that are adjacent to the parking lot.
They have benches.
We've got this area that's.
And they're 30 feet wide?
I don't think that one. I mean, I don't, I don't believe that is.
They're not 30 by 30, which, which, how we start, we kicked off this session with grounding everybody, and everybody who's listening in the public, because this is a big public concern that we're hearing, is the public plazas in the space. And so I guess it would be helpful if, when you identify the areas that you're teeing up to us as potential candidates, that you either say how it meets, or how it almost meets. That would be very helpful.
Do we have a copy of this, and then uploaded?
The.
No, and we do not have a copy of this, no.
No.
Okay.
This L-shaped meets the minimum 3,500 square feet and 35 by 35 square.
Yep, that one's.
And so I think the, the 30-foot dimension was for the ones that are in parking areas, I think that's what, and so these.
Let's go one by one, and, and see how, how big it is, because there's a chart right by your shoulder.
I know, I put it on there. Area one, 465 square feet. Area two, 335. Area three, 5,786. Area four, the area associated with the walkway and the.
Where does the building overhang that?
So this, if you can see this heavy dashed line, that's the, that's the limit of the second and third floors. So portion, that, those are the portions where, when I was talking about that, I said they are undercover.
Yep.
But that's 28, 2,845 square feet.
But to be clear, though, that those areas have benches and some seating in there that Matt put in there, I believe.
And, and you can have, based on what Fred said, you can have cover over public plaza.
It can be covered, it's in the reg.
Yeah.
But is there a loading bay? Is there?
There's no, there's no loading dock here, so these are going to be loaded through the, the regular doors of the, of the facility.
And we eliminated the count you're getting ready to point, where the connector, because of the driveway, because the roadway goes through it.
Right, we didn't, we didn't count the, we didn't count the, but then we have, area five is 861 square feet. Area six, discussed before, 790 square feet, and then there's an area on the side, on the western side of the building, approximately 500 square.
And in all, in all probability, if I'm walking through this space, why would I want to congregate in any of these areas, or why does it suit a public, you think?
I can tell you, it's almost exactly the same exact thing we did for Darian Commons.
I always think, too, like, public plaza, you may not be gathering, you may be passing through.
Exactly, I understand that, I understand that. So a lot of my experiencing, I guess, when I'm going through these spaces, is what I'm after.
So again, that, that, that would be my.
You're going to want to walk through there, no matter if you're coming from the east going to the west, or the west going to the east, primarily because you don't want to be on a busy street. So if, it's always you can climb those steps at Palmer's, you're going to want to go through here as opposed to being on the street. So we put that in because we're trying to connect the two sites, which I think you guys wanted us to do that, besides the fact that we wanted to do that, because we said it was a bridge between the two developments, and also to link everything together to have a pedestrian-friendly area. So most of that is all walkways, okay? And then the real, you know, congregation area is in that little parking lot over there, which is like a little refuge, you know, and you're not bothered by retail, and you're not bothered by a lot of things when, if you're going to hang out in there. There's plenty of benches and little sculpture.
But if this ends up being retail on the ground floor, the benches and such underneath that covered walkway certainly could be a place for, I don't know, kids to congregate in ice cream, or whatever it may be.
Can you take me through the dark purple and why that peach color? Let's look at those two, and then the purple one in the corner?
Just.
Yeah, what, what are those?
So that probably measures, that might be about, you know, 20, maybe close to 30 feet in depth there. You know, it's about, you know, four parking spaces wide, so maybe, you know, 35 feet in length. Yep.
I mean, I'm not. Does that, is that, does that have the same requirement? Because that's not in a parking lot.
No, I'm just curious, what, why, why is it public plaza? I'm just, why you envision it? Because I just, it's two-dimensional for me, and it's a piece of paper. I don't know what's in your mind's eye that you would envision it being a benefit to the public.
I always think, too, to get the overhang, it's underneath the building, you know, here's the building that's right, right through here. So it does provide some shelter. We do have a, you know, a bench here, too. I'm just thinking, if you're waiting for somebody, you know, that might be a, a good spot.
And those, that space is all pavers, that's.
Yeah, it's all pavers.
Yeah, that's not concrete.
So all these, all of these are pavers for here.
And then this, I think.
The walkway's a paver. I mean, the walkway, I mean, the two walkway spaces, really, I mean, if you think about getting from Darian Commons.
Yep.
All the way over to Heights Crossing, you're probably looking for a place to sit down.
I, I understand that.
So I think that, I think that makes, I think certainly, you know, there's no argument that this would be a place to.
Yep, I understand that.
Rest, and that.
The other ones, I'm just not, I don't get. I don't understand how it's public, to be honest.
The other one's less obvious.
Yeah. I, I get the big green, I get the, the transfer of, of connectivity between the blue, the light blue, but the rest of it I'm struggling with, to be honest.
So I think you're right.
At Heights Crossing, we have a similar area to the purple, and then we call it the pink, and that's, that's, public plaza space is actually between our parking structure and frankly, the entrance to a couple of retailers. Other than a bike rack or two, there's no,
there's a couple benches in there, but there's nothing material in there that's sitting there drawing your attention for like public to congregate or, or such.
There's a history, both in Darian Commons as well as Heights Crossing, of sort of this patchwork of places that are considered plaza. We have, for instance, a cut-through that goes from the Palmer's parking lot to West Avenue.
Well, I, I get it, and that's why I understand the blue. I totally understand that light blue. That makes a whole lot of sense to me, and I understand that.
But the same, the same, even if you look at Corbin, because I asked Fred to pull the, the back from Corbin, there's Corbin, there's a pocket here, there's a pocket there that doesn't do anything. You know, and this one in, in Federal, there's a pocket there, there's a pocket there.
Yeah, and I, and I wasn't here when we approved Federal, but I, I would say that they don't make sense to me either as designated public.
I think some of the feedback we've been getting is that the, the public doesn't necessarily see that it's making.
Feedback from who?
Public. Just from people that live in Darian, that they don't, don't necessarily know where those public, that those are public spaces.
The only thing I haven't talked about is green spaces. These are not green spaces.
No, I said public spaces, you know, for everyone, just the people in the building.
Because I sit right here with my kid.
Yep.
Because we do have the benches that kind of indicate that, you know, it's public.
And maybe, and maybe it's just that we just need more help, understanding, visual help?
I always think, too, like, if you have a, you know, a small dog, and you're walking there, someone else has a dog, you know, you're here, maybe you want to just go over away from the other dogs.
There are a lot of dogs here. There's a lot of dogs between the two.
I have like 60% dogs.
Can we get a copy of this, too, because we don't have.
We, we don't have this.
This is just, I got this put together at about 20 after 6:00. So tomorrow, I'll get everything organized and submitted in paper, however many copies you need. The staff can help me out with that. Just so that, I don't like loading up the application file with a bunch of things I know are going to change. There's not much, in a way, a three-dimensional picture, is there?
We have a 3D of the park.
Yeah, we have a 3D of the park. I remember that, early on, and it was like slide number 10 or something.
Even if it's, even if it's a perspective of the elevation of, like, for instance, the, the ele, exactly, okay, the greenery we, I get, but like the elevation of certain pockets that you're envisioning around your site, and what, what is it that anybody would actually go up and engage with from the public? I guess.
I think I got it. I think what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking for.
Is something like this?
You want the dimensions as well?
Yes.
Something like this for each of the other.
And it doesn't have to be expensive, you know, 3D renderings, I, I, but I just, I need something more than a shaded area that borders a, a building, and to understand why is that public? Why is that little patch going to be engaged, where somebody that walked by would feel, that's okay for me to go up and sit, or engage, or do something there. That's, that's what I'm struggling with.
Just to kind of, if I can.
I get the walkways that go through, that is a benefit to the public. I 100% get that.
Just kind of to put it in context, when we started all of this, we proposed a text amendment.
Which I, I will tell you right now, I really, really don't like.
No, I, no, I got that. You, you made that clear. That's why we're here.
Yep.
That's why we're trying to get to the 10,000.
We knew that last week, when you put it, you had more than, than 3,000 permits worth of it.
Right, but, you know, we initially asked to take it out completely, which brought us down to a minimum 3,500, and 5%. So our original plan had 5%, which is that little green area.
And I, I'm just one commissioner. I'm not the end-all, be-all, but I'm just letting, putting it out there.
I, right. We're trying to get over the 10, and if we can't quite make it over the 10, we may come back and say, well, would you let us go with a $9,000 minimum?
And I'm already, I'm already telling you what my answer will be.
Okay.
And I'm only one of, of the, of the commissioners, but you'll know what my answer will be.
I got it. And the other, the other point that I think some of the public comment and, and others are making that really, they confuse plaza space with green space. We're not going anywhere near the green space requirement. That's over 20% on that.
To be clear, if we don't have a 10,000 foot, foot minimum, if that's not what the commission decides, then the plan as a whole doesn't work, and then we're going to come back with a different plan.
I understand.
Fred, you can also take out, if you're overparked, and you didn't even use the shared parking, you can take some waste of parking spaces.
I would, again, that would be up to the commission if we could do that.
I understand that.
There's a lot of waste that's going to.
100%.
We're trying to make it work, and that's why we're here, to get your input, and this is very helpful. Just understand, if we were at 9,000, we'd be dedicating over 15% to public plaza space versus the 5% minimum. Just understand.
I think it's not 10,000.
That we would be, we would be sacrificing more than anybody else in town has had to do. Just understand that.
He wrote this on, Joe.
Okay.
For a bigger site, though, Steve, to be clear. That's a four-acre site on our previous one versus seven acres on Darian Commons, versus seven, almost 10 at Corbin. It's a very different plan.
What we, what we need to do as commissioners, in my opinion, is be consistent with what we did at Corbin, Federal, and Heights Crossing.
But how do you hold a standard of that?
No, no, no.
When it's a, on a smaller site, I guess that's.
At Federal, some of their plaza spaces are 20 by 20, and they count it.
Fair enough.
And I don't even know if Federal has one that's 3,500 square feet.
You don't know if one has what?
3,500 square feet.
I think it's that way between Norton Avenue and the bargain lot?
The dog park.
Well, whatever it is, it's got a sidewalk through it. It's access through the.
It was supposed to be a gazebo, they never put a gazebo there. It's a dog, it's a dog park.
But I, but I think that's the main one that, that meets the requirement.
All, all I'm asking is, help me understand.
Yeah, no, we got it.
The next feedback I'm trying to portray to you is, just help me understand. That's all.
The system's working.
Okay.
Okay. What am I doing here? We're done with everybody except.
Traffic.
Traffic and parking. Dave Sullivan's here, and Greg is here.
Do we have Dave Sullivan's report?
Who would you like to?
Well, the, the commissioners don't have Del Rio's report. I mean, I have a copy of it, because I got it, but Dave Sullivan, that's, that's what I mean. It's, there's his report, right?
Yes.
Yeah, he can go.
Good.
SOR.
SOR?
Yes.
You're up to it.
Step up.
He's been smiling all day since 7:00.
I too have a copy of Greg's report.
You don't have any slides, or you're just going to have.
I don't have any slides. Oh, Dave Sullivan, SOR for the record. What I could do is I'll just hit the five or six main points from the report, and I could touch on Greg's report, and what our next steps are, based on that report, and then we can fill in the gaps, I guess. So we did do a traffic study, we followed all the protocols, traffic counts, things of that nature. The first point that I will make is the intersection sightlines. We did automatic traffic recorder counts, ATR counts, we got the speeds on both Edgerton and on Heights Road. Based on those speeds, the state tells us what the requirements are for site distances, and all of the new driveways, we meet the site distances.
You put the rubber tubes in the road?
Uh, yes.
Oh, you did, I didn't, so.
It was a while ago. We did most of our field data collection in July, which is one of Greg's comments, so.
Okay, in July, that's right when Heights Crossing opened.
Uh, yes, it was, it was mostly open at that point.
Yeah.
Wait, but was it filled out?
From my understanding, it was essentially.
Garage building was not open.
Garage building's not open, and the tenants that were retail tenants, and.
There's two, there's like two.
Yep.
I believe that was part of Greg's comment.
That was part of Greg, okay, I haven't seen that.
Much of the crossing was still not open at that point. We added the traffic from the crossing study into it.
Got it, okay.
The second thing is the traffic generation. So we have the multifamily homes and the commercial space. So what we did in our study is looked at the. So what we did in our study is looked at the commercial space as a quality restaurant, fine dining restaurant. That gives us what we feel is a very conservative look at traffic volumes, but more importantly, when we get to the parking, it gives us parking that peaks at the same time as the residential peaks. So it gives us a picture. Of course, I can comment a little bit on the other uses. For instance, office would be very compatible, but when I get to, to parking, I'll talk a little bit about that. So in general, in terms, because it's a TOD, we take a little bit of a discount from the ITE rates. And with that discount, on a weekday morning, there'd be 12 trips in and out. Of course, restaurants aren't, fine dining isn't open at that time. Lunch, or PM peak, the commuter peak, 67 trips, and 87 trips on a Saturday peak hour.
Hey, what are the peak hours?
The specific peak hours, well, it's one hour between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning. And let's see if I.
Saturday or during the week?
Oh, Saturday is midday, typically 12 to 2, something like that, between 12 and 2.
And then, then Monday to Friday is?
Actually, I have them here. 8:00 to 9:00 AM weekday morning, 4:45, 5:45 and a PM on a weekday, and Saturday was 11:30 to 12:30.
Did you have to adjust those based upon Goddard School, or did you factor that into your?
We factored all of the, all of the new development on the crossing side. And so we add that all into our background analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Third thing, so we, we take the volume, the new traffic volumes, and we add them to a future background, and that background includes the crossing traffic and includes the normal growth of the traffic that's already out there. We do our capacity analyses to determine what the levels of service are, and we look for changes in level of service or something that indicates that there's an impact. So our study intersections included Heights Road from Norotan to Hollitree Ridge, and Edgerton from Heights Road to West Avenue, and all of the driveways. They were all in our, our study area. And we found that in every case, for all the peak hours before and after, there were all level of service D or better, mostly As, Bs, and Cs. And there was only one instance where there was a level of service drop, and it was from A to B, and it was at one of the intersections at the Hollitree Ridge Road signalized intersection on the south parking lot of the tracks and the residential intersection. So one movement went to A from A to B.
And does that, you accounted for the widening of the road there, right? And the new turning lane?
Yes.
Because a new turn lane, I don't know if that signals.
It was not up and running in July.
But we had the new signal. So we actually designed the signal.
Tell them to turn it on.
We can only desire, we can't, they don't let us turn it on. The next point, okay, so we're, I think we're into parking now, right? Yes, now we're into parking. So there's anyone's spaces on site. We talked about the residential, there's plenty for the residential, and there's some additional parking left over on the building side, and then there's the spaces on the non-building side. So the, there's, there's two peak periods with the restaurant where we're over the capacity of the combined lots with the residential. And this is using industry data, not necessarily your regulations. So with the industry data on, on evenings during the week, on a Friday evening, for example, when the restaurant would be particularly busy, we show it, we estimate a total peak of 103 parked vehicles.
How big's your restaurant?
We assumed nine, uh, the full square footage, 9,500 square feet.
If, that was all a restaurant?
Right, realistically.
That would be max, max what you would need, okay?
Realistically, it would probably be two, 4,500 or 5,000.
Okay.
Something like that.
So how, how, all right, so you could say it's not, that's, it would be molto next door to, yeah, another one.
Well, I would, I think what he's trying to articulate is the most max spaces you would ever need fully packed is 103.
Right.
Okay.
So it's more demand than it is spaces. So we have a couple of options. One, there's a surplus of parking in the crossing, that could be used, same ownership and all that. And we see that as, as a minimum, you take the employees and have them park there, for example, to free up some, some space. And the other obvious choice is across the street in the parking lot, northern tracks. After 3:30 on a week, on a weekday and on a weekend, you could park there.
Public park.
So we think that's an asset that's perfectly located. There's actually a crosswalk that already exists that we would want to improve a little bit, make sure it's painted, painted well, maybe.
Can you remind me again, your, your split on your parking building side to park side?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three to?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Fifty-three to 28.
So, you know, during the week, the, the employees over on that site is probably all you need. You probably don't even have to rely on that, although you could. But on Saturdays, it's, it's more dramatic. It's the total demand would be 144 parking spaces. So you would, again, probably put employees over there, you could allow guests, patrons over there, but realistically, you'd probably rely more on that parking across the street for, for that particular scenario.
Who owns the parking lot that's in front of the post office?
Palmer's.
It's part of the shared parking agreement.
Part of shared parking with four?
With Heights Crossing.
Heights Crossing. It's 385 parking places.
So if you, if you pull up, if you pull up the graphic, it's on the other side of that two-foot wide wall on the same level.
Correct.
Like, when you said, when you said go to Heights Crossing, I think the majority of the people in the world think you're going up next to Palmer's and next to Wells Fargo. But if you look, not that one, the other one.
The big one?
No, the one that was, the one with the plaza spaces.
This one?
No, the, go to the one with the plaza spaces.
Oh, okay.
Look, there's, there's almost 2,000 parking places between Darien Commons, Heights Crossing, Palmer's, this new site.
Yeah, it's a more worship.
And you have a town with maybe 7,000 families.
Right. So if you zoom in a little bit, right, on the side to the left, you have 53 parking spaces, right?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, no, there, there. No, shift it over to the right, Bob. No, the other way, I'm sorry.
The other right.
So, see where, see where the peach color is? Right? That's fif, that, that spot's got 53. Now go to the, to the left border.
On the other side of the fence, yeah.
Right there, finger. That's, that's the post office, dry cleaners, and, and fitness center parking lot. And that's part of the shared parking here in four, four Heights Crossing. And I go there all the time, I'm going there after this meeting to drop off my mail and bill, and send two bills and ones to the steward people. That's never occurred in there, like, ever. I'm the only guy in there. So you talk about, that's part of shared parking agreement?
Not with, not with us currently, but it's part with Heights Crossing, yes.
Part of Heights Crossing, correct.
And not part of Heights Corner, to be clear.
Correct, I, I fully understand. And that wall is how high?
Is that a wall?
There is a wall.
There's shrubs.
I don't know what a wall, there's a wall.
Just make sure, make sure the shrubs are, are two feet on center, so when I'm walking from one to the other, I can walk over. Thanks, man. So what I would do is, is on your next comeback, that parking lot there, which is the post office, the dry cleaners, and the fitness center is brand new, tell me how many parking spaces are there. Because that's on the same plane, the stuff up above, which is Wells Fargo and Palmer's, you gotta go up and fly the stairs. You following?
And is there any chance to amend that shared parking agreement?
Hmm?
Is there any chance to amend that shared parking agreement?
We haven't asked anybody. We've gone through this plan with Palmer's, they're actually pretty supportive, and we've gone through with Larry's, because they're neighbors to the right and left. Both are pretty supportive.
But if it's not a restaurant, you're not going to have that need for the surplus.
Understood, understood.
I'm thinking about expanding your park space in lieu of a shared parking area somewhere else, getting some.
Because if, if you go, if, if I'm, if I'm going to go to find any restaurant, either I can park where the, where the 28 space lot is, right, or I can move across the street to there. I have a crosswalk going both ways.
Yep.
Me personally, I would probably go to the train station parking lot, then have to deal with that.
And again.
So you cross the street anyway.
Parking, it is probably most useful for employees. They could be farther away, they could be, you know, more easily dictated to. Now, the, the other part of this, and we didn't do a full study of this, but we did do a quick look if it was all office, for example, or if it was retail or something like that. These numbers changed dramatically, and essentially, they all fit on site if there were those uses. We didn't look at the combination of those uses.
So in theory, if it was an office, you wouldn't even need the parking on the right?
Don't know if it would be.
Roughly.
I don't know if it would be that good, but again, we, with office, can also take kit, take advantage of the shared parking.
Yeah.
With the restaurant, you really can't.
Yep. Yeah, because of the time. Got it, yep, understood.
What time is, does?
So.
Chicken joints? What's the time of the chicken joint?
Garden catering.
What time do they close?
Who?
Garden catering.
Garden catering's open till either 10 or 11.
So quickly on Greg's memo, there's four or five things that he, he asked us to, to supplement our study with. One, he wanted a fall count and do a spot count, and I think we're going to do it at Norotan Avenue and Heights to see if there's much difference between the summer counts we took and the, when school's in. The second thing is he's, he was looking for some of our raw data, particularly the speed data, the ATR data, which we will provide. He asked if we could look at some other uses specifically in the restaurant realm, the fast casual, high turnover restaurant, things like that. We just haven't had a chance to look at it, we will look at it, but I think the, the factor of the turnover and the more casual, the shorter the stays, and you typically have lower parking demand, but we'll, we'll confirm all that with one of these. He wanted us to observe the train parking, just to confirm that on, on evenings and on Saturdays when we're peaking, that we in fact do have excess capacity across there, which we will. And then ask for the electronic files for all of our analyses, which we will gladly provide.
Is that where he said synchro files?
Yes. And, and then the site plan review comments, again, these will be addressed, we'll work with Lantech on these, but they essentially are some comments on the turning movement diagrams that were done, the vehicle tracking, and some more details on the site distance mapping that was prepared. So we'll work with Lantech to do that.
Where's the dumpster going to be? The trash room for the apartments of the trash?
I wonder where the site plan, Rob?
Next to the roomy.
So the, where's the residents putting their trash when they're, when they're emptying their garbage? You know, you're not like, not making a crosswalk.
Trash chute, there has to be. Building inside, when there's small buildings, you don't need it, but you need it in a building like this.
So with the, so the trash, so something, you can have an employee take it from the trash chute, trash room in the building.
We have, we have three employees at Heights Crossing that'll double over here as well.
And then my last comment is that this traffic engineer likes crosswalks. They are great traffic common measure, and even mid-block are, are fine as long as they're in a proper environment, and you have the proper safety things in there, whether it's signage or, or, or whatever's required for a ward's place.
I don't like those yellow things. So what, what I would like to see is a crosswalk going north and south on both corners. Because if I'm coming out of Heights, if I'm coming out of.
Here?
That, yep, down, across and down. Because if I'm coming out of Darien Commons, right, and I'm not going to, you know, the Starbucks that's going to be on top of the stairs, going right to the train station, why would I cross the street twice? Look at this guy, he's green with me. Right, because you're coming, you're coming out of Darien Commons, you're walking out of your front door, your apartment, going to the train station. Your movement, it makes me cross the street twice.
You mean, you wouldn't walk across here into this parking lot?
I don't know, they want to go across.
You don't want to cross here and then walk down.
Correct.
He doesn't want to cross the streets.
That's a great crosswalk, though.
But I can get clipped on that crosswalk, and I can get clipped the second time, and I'll cross. If you go my way, you get.
Walks over to the line space.
Oh, I got you, okay. If the town let us, well, it doesn't matter, we can put another crosswalk in. I mean, if it was the post road, it's a completely different thing.
Right, David Jennings worked three years to get it across the post road from Webster.
We haven't been successful with any crosswalks on the post road. And all of us, all of our properties are on the post road.
The only one that's miraculous is it appears, well, that became, appeared out of nowhere in front of Darien Green, where no one knew where it came from, and it goes right to dust, it just appeared. And if you do look at the deep, deep, deep files, Don Anderson signed off on it like seven years ago. But that's, that's what I like, because the movements of the people, if you go there today, the moves of people, they come out of Darien Commons, they walk down this two, the, the orange spot, what tangerine, whatever you want to call it, they go past the black parking lot, and they cross the street. Right? And, and so if I'm coming from Goddard School, if I'm a little kid coming from Goddard School, I'm going, going back to.
Taking the train home?
No, if you're going, it's, I'm dead serious, the protect, if you come out of Goddard School, you walked down the center of the Palmer's parking lot, right? You get to, you get down the stairs in front of the fitness center of the post office, you come out the purple, you cross on the blue, you go across Edgerton, protected again, and you get to the front door of Bear Bar, and you go north, and you go to your apartment door. And you never got remotely close to any public street.
Yeah, no, I like that, that cross, that part, yep.
You're trying to protect people. Right, hey Greg, you want to give us a, a quick update? Anybody have a question for this gentleman? Just give us a quick overview, Greg, you're good, thanks a lot, Dave. Some people got your memo, some people did not. Your memo's dated September 30th, it's kind of also dated September 29th. I don't know what it's dated, but you're here.
Greg Del Rio, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, director of transportation for Augustine Hanover. We conducted the peer review of traffic for, and parking for this project. So I just have some notes, I, I shared the notes with, with Fred and Jeremy earlier, just highlights a lot of what, what David just went over as far as our comments go. Remind me at the end, I want to talk about that crosswalk that you keep going back to. I have some thoughts on that. So again, for the record, the SLR report was September 5, 2025, Lantech's site plan was August 8, 2025. I understand site plan is adjusted a little bit, we'll take a little look at that when that comes in. Not to mention the comments that we made about the turning movements, which were all just, you know, sort of crossing Ts, dot in the i's type comments. Data collection, as Dave went over, was in July 2025, so yeah, if they could do a spot count, and, and we're recommending Norotan Avenue and Heights Road, you know, you might say, why not Edgerton and Heights? Well, that's kind of a quiet in the middle block, it doesn't really get a lot of activity. I don't think that's going to tell the story as much as Norotan Avenue leading to and from 95 and getting all the traffic. That's really going to show the changes and patterns, if, if, if there's anything significant. And then they can go back and, and adjust the rest of the intersections accordingly.[1755.81] And then they can go back and adjust the rest of the intersections accordingly. Trip generation. So in one sense, it was a little conservative and others, maybe not. So the conservative part is that they didn't take credits, I don't believe, for the existing land use, right? So the existing land use is generating trips. So you can subtract that and then add back the new trips.
Of the prayer factory?
I think they did it the right way.
Yeah, yeah. It's a very low use, but I'm just saying it is slightly conservative. You know, it's 10 trips or whatever the number is, right?
There's two guys that work there.
Or internal capture. So right, the person in the apartment's going downstairs to have dinner. There's no credit for that. Pass by trips, et cetera. There's other things that we take credits for they didn't take them. So they did take credit for being near a train station. That's about really, I think, maybe the only credit that we take that they.
That's the 20% they use?
Correct. Well, it's also built in to depend. There's different ways of doing it. I don't remember what exactly they did, but yes, they took that credit. The not conservative part is due to the land use assumptions and the commercial use. That's a big wildcard. And it's tough to do when you don't have a specific land use or even close to, I mean, it could be a CVS, it could be a restaurant, it could be an insurance office.
Right. But what we do as a commission on every project, whether it's Corbin, Federal, that there's a percentage that goes to offices, a percentage that goes to personal services, a percentage that goes to quick service. There's a percentage to fine dining restaurants. This is only 9,500 square feet of retail space. We can slice it and dice it if we want to, you know, and it's subject to them approving it or we can just leave it as a wild card, right? The last time we talked about this on some of the other projects, they switched them from sit-down restaurants to quick service. So it was a percentage switch. And that's happened on Corbin, Federal and Heights Crossing. So it's something we can manage around.
So the trade-off usually with that is some are more heavily, fine dining's a good example.
Right, exactly. We can say it's more of a parking demand.
But lower trip generation.
Right.
Where a fast food is the opposite, right? High trip generation, but you don't have as many parking spaces needed.
Right. Like Chipotle on the other end of town is an absolute nightmare. You know, the mall.
From a traffic or?
Parking.
Or parking. There you go. And that's Chipotle.
But that's a way we can.
They generate a lot of traffic and they.
We can manage around it.
Parking.
And they can propose it or we can.
Yeah. So again, based on, you know, their assumptions is the results of their traffic study. So a higher use such as fast casual, there's some kind of mix and matching the parking and the traffic impacts. Assuming, so fast food would be absolutely the one to use if you just wanted to do trip generation and what the traffic impacts are. But then again, that won't tell you the story on the parking. So maybe fast casual, the one that.
Right.
Or they can do a sensitivity, another way to look at it.
But to the leasing agent for the project, say, we'd know what's the demand.
Yeah. I think we're less concerned with trip generation and the traffic impacts than we are in parking on this particular area. That's my two cents in having been around this area and studying it for a long time. Operations based on all of those assumptions are acceptable. As he said, none of them are worse than D, and they would have been a D anyway, level service D. So it's not really conceivable that the difference is not that great. Again, if it went to some of those other land uses, it may change. It also, fine dining, as Dave mentioned, doesn't impact morning. So if you do a different use like a CBS, you know, now all of a sudden you've got a little bit of a different story there. So then parking, the supplies, I had 84. I think I heard 81, maybe that switched it down a little bit. The report said there was a shortfall of the 19 spaces on the weekdays, 60 spaces on the weekends. The one, the big question we had is what's going on with the residential spaces? Those are usually reserved. So they do a shared parking analysis, but they're not really shared parking, right? We had that issue with Wonder and that property where they were actually reserved spaces and not shared parking, right? If I have a reserve sign in front of that space, if I have gates, which I understand that's for commercial, but it isn't ours. So that's different. So that changes the calculation a little bit. The impacts of shared parking land use assumptions, update them. Whatever they end up doing with the traffic, they'll also end up updating with the parking demand. We asked them to do observations of the train station just to confirm that during those times where those peaks are happening, there is spaces available, right? Same thing. So I heard something today that I'm not sure if it's in the number or not, but when we looked at the crossing, parking demands, they had a surplus of, I think, 56 spaces or something like that. So there's plenty to handle the weekday overflow. And I tend to agree with you. If it ends up being that lot next, right next door where Palmer's is, then that's great. I mean, it's right there. And that, my experience, again, not that I studied it, that's a pretty likely used parking lot even today.
I'll be there in five minutes.
Well, that's probably happening right now.
And anybody that's going to Palmer's doesn't use that spot.
They don't. That's what I mean. Yeah. I find that parking lot to be underutilized.
So that's not, shouldn't be an impact on that.
Just from my own experience, exactly. I agree.
The dry cleaners closed and the post office.
And then if you have that agreement and that's part of those 56 spaces, you know, you've got a very.
That's all TV gate, yep.
That plus whatever the other overflow goes across the street to the train station. So again, just, you know, do the field work, get it, make sure it's all good and, you know, there's no questions there. Site plan, we requested the revised turning templates, show the full extents of the sidelines for the intersections. I think also that it looks like this plan also moved it a little bit further away from the building corner, maybe. I don't know. It looks a little different, but maybe not. But we had a little bit of an issue hitting this corner looking this way, but.
The building back rolled that neck.
There it is. I knew something looked a little different here. So it's probably addressed. Either way, they have what's called, and again, you know, maybe from my past presentations, what's called safe stopping distance. So there's intersection site distance, which is from this person's point of view to see a car coming and I have a gap. And then there's safe stopping distance, which is from the driver's point of view. And, you know, a ball comes out or a kid runs out or a person, I have enough time to see him, hit my brakes and not hit. That's safe stop. And you definitely have that. You have a straight road, flat, without curves.
Is that, that engine's a two-way, right?
Two-way. Mm-hmm.
No, the engine's to the.
One lane in each direction. Yeah, there's not a one-way circulation. At least it's a two-way throughout the side. So that summarizes that. Yeah, I think, so what happens now? If you don't put a crosswalk, I mean, what happens today? It's the gaggle of people coming off the train that, you know, once they make this turn, they don't use this and use this. I just watched it tonight again. Right? They all just start angling over wherever they feel like it. So I can definitely see this as being an organizer, right? And cleaning that all up. So I think you're going to get a lot of training. You didn't even mention the train. You're talking about that connection, which is obvious.
You're talking about.
This is fantastic. This is awesome.
Gets people off the street.
I walked it today without a sidewalk. It's dangerous. Yeah, I know. But, you know, once you put all this in, you know, now you have a nice logical, I think.
It's the center of the donut, man. Got to make it right.
Question for you.
Yeah, this is pulling it all together.
You got a question?
You're supposed to ask us the questions that we can ask you.
No, I want to ask you a question. You said the use within the building, if it was a restaurant. But you also have in total about 200 apartments with the new addition here. So with 200 apartments, we're trying to make it pedestrian friendly. I don't know how many people are going to walk and how many people are going to drive. We have a history in town, people drive a block sometimes to get where they're going. I don't know if that's factored in. The other thing I kept thinking about is, you know, a lot of people, I don't know if the industry's changed or not, but a lot of people are taking Uber to go into and from dinner because of drinking and driving and whatnot. Has your industry sort of, you could ask this to Dave too, has that factored into, you know, parking for restaurants?
So I don't know how caught up the ITE trip and parking generation tables are. They're amazingly good wherever you apply them. It's really surprising. You know, people say these samples are taken from, you know, Indiana to California to Texas to Maine. And somehow, when we apply them, it really, you know, comes very close after it's all done, right? We go back, we look at these places and go, you know, it's pretty close.
Yeah. Because, I mean, just to Ricardo's point, you have 189 apartments at Avalon. You have 65 at Heights Crossing. You have 124, 116 at Darien Commons. Not everyone's driving their car to go to, you know, the restaurant. We've talked about this for years.
Yeah. And I started off my whole presentation with the fact that it was conservative and we didn't take those credits.
So Dave's got work to do and then you're going to review his work again and give back to us.
Yeah, and a little bit with Rob on the template.
And then does the fire department chime in and make sure their fire trucks?
Yeah, that was one of the things Dave's going to respond to.
Was he specifically concerned with turnaround fire trucks from where to where? It was just in and out of the site? Did it at all affect that upper?
It was an old site plan, so the trucks weren't. Movement wasn't right.
There was a question about what truck we used to. Because Darien doesn't really have published data on their fire trucks. So it's kind of a little bit of a treasure hunt.
They're all brand new, man, I can tell you that. We bought one.
So that's what we, we used a big truck that we used in a lot of fair, lower Fairfield County towns. And we just got to make sure that it agrees with your specific truck.
Bob Bush notes that the fire apparatus turning shows a Fairfield fire apparatus. Not sure if this will meet Darien requirements.
Yeah, I saw that.
They have bigger trucks in Fairfield. They have taller buildings that we dropped by Richard Grant off in the. We get.
We'll figure it out.
Thank you. Any questions for Greg Del Rio?
Not at this point.
Good. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Anything else you got?
The only thing I had was this, but you saw this before. It's the calculation of the affordables and incentive units.
Why just run through it while you got it?
So we don't have to do it next time.
Yeah, there's two pieces. So the base density is. How many floors you have to hang?
The base density is 12 per acre times 1.339 acres, 16.064 units.
Where does the 12 per acre come from?
That's.
Jeremy?
That's in the regulations.
That's the base regulation density. The incentive units, you need, in order to get to 20, we have 3.396 incentive units. So the required BMR units are the 16.064 times 14%. The 14% is your starting point. And then the additional units, 3.396 times 25%, because that's what the regulation says. And you add to all that up and you get 3.098 units.
That's the set of size.
The fee and loo calculation is, I looked this up today. It's the current state meeting income times 300% times the 3.098. It's $1,158,032.40 by today's numbers.
And based on three BMRs.
Yep. And that's the calculation.
Yeah. Because I actually printed out that document and have it with me too.
Which one?
The one that showed you how to calculate it? There's an exhibit in the zoning code.
Dependix.
Yeah.
Yep.
Everyone's got that, right?
And that's it.
1,158,032 divided by 3 equals, yeah, 368,000. I used to say.
I mean, I might be a couple cents off because of.
Yeah, I always said 350.
And then the only other slide I have is what the additional items are. We talked quite a bit about some of these things. The text amendment is still pending. I have to sharpen those up and get them into the staff tomorrow so we meet them, filing and notice deadlines. The police commission approved this. We talked about what they're looking into, the speed limit and posting. ARB is still pending. And then I mentioned Joe Candace and Greg Del Rio as being involved. Obviously, the other things like the fire marshal in sewer, I think are still out there as well.
Talk to me about the height of the building? Because I saw a zoning text box that said the building was 45 feet tall. And that's the regulation. So why are you asking for an variance or text change on the height?
Let me see which slide is.
Building is 49 foot 6 inches to the top of the lobby on the second floor.
Why don't you?
So fill us around for the record again, everything for the budget. So.
Let me see if I can enlarge these calculations. Is this the best one, the best side?
Well, we had a drawing that shows the dimension to here, which is the top of the lobby on the roof. There it is. Which is 49 foot. 49 foot 9 inches, I think, is.
From what point?
From average grade. 49 foot 9 inches from average grade to the top of the roof on the, for the lobby on the roof, amenity space. The main roof itself is well under the 45 feet. It's 40 foot 8 inches.
There's some document that's got a zoning text box that says the building, as is and as proposed, is 45 feet. And I can't find it right now.
There's no, there's no as is. Probably the site plan. We'll talk to our civil engineers.
You know, the other thing, the other thing that's kind of worth mentioning is the equipment doesn't count as long as it's the minimum for equipment up on the roof, like the elevator machinery and, you know.
And you do architectural features, right?
Right. Parapets don't count.
That's what he's showing is not a parapet.
Right. But architectural features do not. Like those things, also the top of Heights Crossing, you have two things that shut up the roof, which I didn't know were going to be there, but they don't count. Like kind of they put an architectural feature on top of that.
That would be the easy fix, wouldn't it?
Sure would.
Assume you occupy it and it becomes finished space, now you have another issue. So oddly enough, this is actually lower than the equipment room height.
The issue is that you have five buttons on the elevator. You have five buttons on the elevator.
Yeah.
That's the issue.
That's a good way to look at it. We're only supposed to have.
Chipplated the same problem. You have like six buttons on the elevator.
You have to have the elevator for ADA.
Yeah, well, yeah, if you have, we have the amenity space.
Well, you can have the elevator go down to an unfinished basement.
Correct. I mean, to be honest with you, if it's in a flood zone, why do you have a basement at all?
Right. Well, we're not.
We're not a flood zone.
For, she's talking about flooding the entire time.
It's flooding on the street.
Golf simulator? A golf simulator is not finished anyway. Have you ever gone to a golf simulator? There's nets on the ceiling, nets on the walls, concrete floor. It's not finished. Do you play golf?
I do.
Yeah. Ever go to a golf simulator?
I've gone to golf simulators.
Are they ever, are they ever finished base?
They're one at Heights Crossing, that is.
The one that's, the one that I go to is not. That's why.
Many of your.
The simulator's in the store.
Your argument that a basement's space doesn't make sense. No one's going to have a birthday party downstairs in a basement.
We have a gym down there and other spaces down, is, we don't have any other amenity space in the building.
We try to build basements in most every one of our buildings, unless we can't. We try to build basements in most every one of our buildings unless we can't, unless there's some impediment that doesn't allow it. The flooding never actually went into this building, but it did go on Leary's, and it certainly flooded that site, the parking lot site.
Well, we're raising the grade on the, this building is almost 5 feet above the street.
No, you understand my point, right?
I do understand.
But I mean, it's all about, we don't have to debate if, how much water.
I mean, we, we consider, continue to see the 50-year storm like every other year now, so not unusual.
You added, you added a basement to, what's that, 1987?
1897 has a basement. We actually expanded it.
But there's no finished space. There's no finished space in that basement, nope.
No.
Right, and, and I don't think there's any finished space inside Danny's Bicycle Shop or.
No, no, but it's completely full of stuff, believe me, everybody uses it.
No, I understand, but if you have, if you have storage space down there and boxes and racks with master locks on them, that's not finished space.
I understand.
So you're asking something, you're asking for something that you don't need.
What's the definition of finished space? You said you used a golf simulator as a one.
Section 210.
It's defined in there?
Yes.
So I could have a golf simulator that's got a concrete floor and it's not considered finished space?
Three layers.
Most of the golf simulators I've been in are definitely in finished spaces.
What was it, a barn or a.
Exactly.
710 Steve. 1010, 15 Steve.
And the answer is probably yes. Any more questions, Fred? We're good? So we're going to continue.
I'm good, we got a bunch of open things we have to deal with and.
Do you want to take any comments from the public?
Oh, which one, I'm sorry, good, great, I apologize. Is anyone in the job public to speak to this application? My person I don't recognize is, there's one on the back and who else is, is staff or consultant?
Then we got to continue the hearing.
Okay.
The issue is, the next available night, which is when text change was continued to, is October 28th. There is no way we could get to this on October 28th. They would have all their experts sitting here for way past 10:00. The next meeting after that is the middle of November, because the first Tuesday in November is election day, and, so Fred and I were looking at a possible special meeting. Fred, what did we talk about?
Which doesn't have to be a Tuesday.
It doesn't have to be a Tuesday.
Yeah, we talked about November 10th as being a possible meeting. November 3rd is, could.
Well, November 3rd was, I don't know if we can do it, move in Town Hall, or look at the 3rd or the 10th.
Let's ask the appointment.
We didn't schedule the 11th when we do the annual calendar.
11th Town Hall's closed.
Oh, it is? I heard this.
Veterans Day.
That's, the first Tuesday is election day.
It's Friday.
Second Tuesday is Veterans Day.
Oh, oh, Veterans Day.
So we can look at the special meeting nights that are not Tuesdays, or the fallback would be Tuesday, November 18th.
I will be away.
Tuesday, November 18th.
I will be away.
I will not be.
This might be the one they want.
Who's that? Who's that?
Oh, just.
Maybe it's probably. So you want to have a special meeting on, a non-special meeting is Tuesday, November 18th.
That's correct.
So Mr. Mazin?
I thought we were scheduled for P&amp;Z meeting that night anyway.
18th?
Yeah.
We are, it's a scheduled meeting.
That's a scheduled meeting.
So the question is, does your client want to have, be, be delayed, postponed to Tuesday to 18th, or do we have to do a special meeting?
18th of November.
The problem with that, Steve, is then you guys don't have a decision until January, because you don't meet in December.
Because you have only one week left.
They're trying to add a special meeting in December as well. Want to bring that up?
It's not like we're going to need a special meeting anyway, so.
I would throw a special meeting in, between the 11th or whatever you said. When Amy's out of town?
It's a strategy.
The 10th. November 10th.
To Monday.
To Monday, yes.
You make the 10th?
Does that sound like to the Christians?
It'd have to be the evening.
Yes, 7 o'clock.
Can you do that? Jamie, can you do that?
I can do it, yeah. Yep.
How's your client like November 10th, so Monday, at 7:00 PM?
Monday?
Sounds good. Perfect. Client's safe.
Yes, thank you.
When do we, how do we close the gap on what's considered Public Plaza? Do we wait till November 10th?
I think, I think you're working it out with staff.
Do we do it at the text amendment meeting?
I, yeah, I mean.
You, you bounce it past staff.
See if.
Okay. Looking at the reg, and then also see what process we did with some of the, with the other three B.
Okay.
And that, yeah, I would love to see expanded space in that walkway. There's a way we can borrow parking spots away. I, I think that's a, it's a really nice opportunity that you've created there to expand more green pockets.
I agree completely.
The ones on 188?
Green pockets that are either, you know, that upper parking, that's on the top side of that, on the right, like a.
Like a breakout, like almost like a breakout area where someone could sit down and two benches face each other or something like that.
Yeah, like some, some pockets along that corridor that you could build that out, rather than a little sliver somewhere off the, you know, side of the building.
Okay, let's, let's take a look. Yeah.
Yeah. Because I think that's a nice, it's a really thoughtful thing, and, and people will engage with that more than some spot on the lower left-hand side of the building.
Okay.
That's my thoughts.
Well, that's good, that's rather here.
Yeah, yeah.
Here for suggestion, Monday, November 10th. You know, these are public hearing, open meetings. All right, thank you.
Steve, you got 6-6 now, by the way, just so you know. They were down 6-0.
Yeah, we have, we just did the mandatory. That's the end of the public hearing, that's good, the general meeting. The first time the general meeting was mandatory thorough, number 3, 2025, also known as PR 25, Jan 1, 11, 1 and 3 Park and Drive. Request for plant to get easement in favor of EverSource's hotel property on 1 and 3 Park and Drive.
Hey, guys, we have to finish the meeting.
Joe Candice, Joe?
In our packets, we got a memo dated September 30th, to Jeremy from Jennifer Trineski. EverSource's requested easement of 10 hour property and a touchscreen map. You want to explain a little bit, Jeremy? It's pretty straightforward. It's along the sidewalk.
Right, there's an easement that is needed from, to assist EverSource in providing service. Craig Flaherty's been involved in the 3 Park Plans project, but I think that's the simplest explanation is, EverSource wants and needs an easement to provide the required power to building 3, and thus, because it's an extension of a public utility under state statute 8-24, a referral and a report is required.
Do you serve, because of that, do you care?
Obviously, there's been service to the building.
There has been.
There were.
But now they want the easement.
Oh, now they want the.
Is that correct? That's generally it. EverSource is becoming much more strict and trying to get easements when they can, and this is a perfect opportunity to say to the building owner, we'd like our easement now so we can provide you service. And the owner probably said, but you always provided service, and they say, but we've never had an easement before.
So in, in the memo, Jennifer attached some page, started the PCOD from 2016, in section 14, it says utility infrastructure, even though some of these utilities may have been provided by private companies, their ability to is important for residents and businesses and open residences. The PCOD looks to, looks at developing utilities with capacity location to ensure they're adequate for the community needs. It sounds like they need more service to this building. Continue work for companies to improve utility service response.